Good morning. Welcome to our Board of Supervisors meeting for February 10th, 2016 or 15. Boy, I'm jumping ahead, aren't I? Could we please stand for the pledge?
.......................................... Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna just have a few seconds.
Good morning.
Okay, we're gonna continue.
Everybody's student now, their funeral?
No.
We're gonna come in t-shirts next time.
Peace.
Fourteen.
All right. So, um, I'm gonna report out on a closed session that we couldn't report out before. It was on December 16th, 2014. In a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956, got 9604, the Board authorized the county council to initiate litigation. Now that all parties have been properly served, we can now fully report out. The initiated litigation is against Ross Thornton, Neil Anderson and Associates Incorporated, Grant Hubbard, Michael Cozad, and Doze, and Doze, one through 20, inclusive for negligence, professional negligence, and private nuisance. And now we'll move to our public comments. Any item of interest in the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the consent agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the regular agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So, we'll begin, and we will have three minutes for public comment.
Joe Kelly. The 2015 question is temporary taking by flooding compensable in Calaveras County, State of California, the United States of America. Now, on the issue of flooding, was the Office of Emergency Services activated Saturday, February 7th, 2015, and Sunday, February 8th, 2015? If so, where were they? When will damage assessments and flood reports be before the Board of Supervisors? Considering there is a special meeting February 11th, 2015, add to the agenda, the Office of Emergency Services Damage Assessments, Flooding Reports, and Disaster Funds Availability. Another issue of grave importance. Upcoming items, tentative schedule, water presentation by CCWD, undetermined date. I suggest to you a modification to the water presentation to include water availability, sewer availability, infrastructure availability, not only of CCWD, but all the water and sewer provider agencies in the county, to include the City of Angels camp. A short time before the majority of this Board was elected, LAFCO held meetings on MS Harves Municipal Services Reports. The same or similar information should be required with a general plan update. Water, sewer, and infrastructure availability are important parts of the general plan update as determining factors of communities' build-out. Without water, sewer, and infrastructure information, the general plan will be severely flawed and subject to a legal challenge. Water, sewer, and infrastructure information needed. These are just ideas of mine. How much do we have? How much do we need? Where is it going to go? Where does it need to go? What's it going to cost? How's it going to be paid for? These questions should also be applied to the agriculture cluster housing carve-outs before agriculture cluster housing carve-outs are discussed for approval. The following issues had significant exposure by previous Board of Supervisor approvals. Oak Canyon Ranches. What is the status of the original water and sewer agreements to be borne by Oak Canyon Ranches? It is my understanding the property has been sold. If the buyer relinquishes the project in favor of agricultural pursuits, who is responsible for the water and sewer agreements? Is there infrastructure bond money available? Vallecito, 1,000 homes, water and sewer, private wells, and septic systems. Current general plan designated parcel, sawmill project, insufficient water. Are you staying with that decision?
Very good.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Perry. I'm with the Calaveras Dental Project. Joining me today are Dr. Joanna Motsu, dental dentist in San Andreas, Robin Bunch, county public health nurse, and Linda Wink, county public health nurse. February is National Dental Health Month. We're here to update you today about the state of oral health in Calaveras County. While several dentists in the county are available for patients, they only take private dental insurance and cash. We have no dental provider in Calaveras County that will accept Medi-Cal, which leaves a lot of our county residents without dental health care. That results in our residents who have dental issues come up flooding emergency rooms to receive antibiotics and pain medications to temporarily put out the fire. However, they will be returning to the emergency room over and over because they have no way to address these issues here in the county. If we do refer our patients out of county, that poses a hardship as far as transportation, time off from work, just a difficult situation for our patients. Poor oral health affects our general health. In children, oftentimes, even though they have a mouth of rampant decay, when asked if anything hurts, they will say no. They don't know what it feels like not to have pain. Poor oral health in children can result in learning issues, behavioral issues, poor nutrition. We had one child, a third grader, rampant dental decay, had the same teacher when he returned in the fall for fourth grade. After we identified his dental issues, over the summer, he'd have dental treatment. The teacher reported that he was a new child when he arrived, ready to learn in the fourth grade, with his dental issues corrected. Missing teeth in adults can affect their self-esteem if they're trying to go out and obtain employment. Oftentimes, they're turned away because of their dental appearance, and again, the same issues, poor nutrition, infection, are issues that a lot of times we see in these adults. The same problem as far as obtaining dental care for them. Time off from work if they're employed, unable to obtain employment. These issues, as far as employment, are costly to the county as well. The programs that we have in place for dental health are the Calaveras Children's Dental Project, providing preventive services to parents with young children, age zero to five, preschoolers and kindergarteners through third graders. These services are provided onsite at WIC sites, Head Start preschool sites, and elementary school sites. Another project we have in place is the Calaveras Dental Project. Once a month, clinics are performed at Dr. Motsu's office for very low-income children, zero to 18, and seniors age 55 and older. All of these programs are grant-funded. Every year, we need to go out and try and obtain funding, continued funding for these problems. Lack of access to oral health care has been, has come up constantly over the years on county needs assessments. We are all members of an oral health task force that we have formed in the county to address these issues. We meet once a month. We have a group of several of us to try and figure out a long-term, sustainable plan so our county residents can enjoy good oral health. So, we're trying to address this longstanding issue in the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Liz Gilbert, and I'm here on behalf of the Resource Connection, Calaveras Crisis Center Prevention Education Program. And I'm here to talk to you today about Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, which takes place in February, along with Valentine's Day, of course. And the color for Teen Dating Violence Month is orange, so I have my orange scarf to promote that. The statistics are really compelling in terms of why it's so important that we get out and we talk to the teens in our life about this issue and raise awareness with others in our community. One in three teens experience some form of abuse in their relationships. So, that can be being targeted with sexting and cyberbullying online. It can take place in the form of physical violence, verbal assaults, jealous accusations, or other forms of controlling behavior. More reasons to get out and talk and talk early, about 72% of eighth and ninth graders are actually dating. Violent behavior typically begins around the ages of 12 and 18, and only 33% of teens who were in violent relationships ever told anyone about the abuse. So, and then we also know that violent relationships in adolescents can have serious ramifications by putting victims at a higher risk for substance abuse, eating disorders, risky sexual behavior, and further domestic violence. So, my partner at the, in prevention is Yvonne Foote. She's actually at another presentation this morning. But she and I have been going out throughout the year, talking to teens at Bret Hart and Calaveras High School to get the word out about, you know, healthy relationships, warning flags for teen dating violence, and also resources that are available in the community as well as nationwide to help them if they or friends of theirs are in these situations. We know that teens rely heavily on the information that comes from their peers, so we want to make sure that that information is correct and up to date. And so, we've been going out to the high schools with this information. Now, actually, today, February 10th, is Light Up California Day. So, agencies and schools and other individuals all through California will be wearing orange and doing different activities to promote the awareness of teen dating violence and healthy relationships. If you have the opportunity to go out to Calaveras High School on Thursday, you'll see all kinds of orange decorations, balloons, ribbons, posters, as well as the peer mentor groups going out to the study halls throughout campus to talk about what they've learned around teen dating violence, healthy relationships, and resources that are available. Next month, Yvonne and I will be going out to Bret Hart to talk to the ninth graders about healthy relationships and resources and dating violence. I left for all of you ribbons that have been created by our Domestic Violence Support Group that meets at the Crisis Center, so you can post it and have people kind of begin the conversation about what you know about teen dating violence and healthy relationships. I also have our Prevention Education Newsletter where we featured this topic this month and give you some tips on talking to the teens in your life. And it highlights a couple of seniors at Bret Hart who are donating the proceeds of their senior project to the Crisis Center. So, thank you very much for your attention today, and I'll leave these for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Stevens, Mark Twain Medical Center. I just briefly wanted to bring some things to your attention this morning for the month of February. I'm hearing a lot of other great initiatives that are out there in our amazing community. Wanted to remind all of you and those behind me and those listening from today forward that for February, it is National Heart Awareness Month. And unfortunately, in our day-to-day lives, you know, we think about those that we love and how we lose them to various ailments and accidents. But unfortunately, still today in the United States, the number-one cause of death is heart disease. So, I wanted to bring two things to your attention this morning to remind you, and again, our great community, that during the month of February, Mark Twain Medical Center in continuous, over a 10-year partnership, I believe, with Sir Optimus International in Calaveras County, is once again providing free lipid panel for, those of you that are not in the healthcare world, what that really means is cholesterol screenings for all of the women in Calaveras County. So, any woman, any great woman in Calaveras County can visit any of our five rural health clinics or our hospital. You just need to be fasting. The test is free. It's really important that you know what your cholesterol is so that you don't become a victim of heart disease. The second thing that I want to tell you about on a really exciting note, for those of you that may not know this, Mark Twain Medical Center has recruited another amazing specialist. We have recruited a three-boarded, I believe, actually, it's probably gonna be more, five boards. I apologize for not knowing that accurately. But she's board-certified as a cardiologist, coming to us from the Chicago area. Dr. Courtney Vergilio has moved her entire family here to Murphy's, and she's going to be our medical director across the street of our brand-new heart center. And I'm inviting each of you, and surely is you as well, to please join us next Thursday evening, and all of the residents of Calaveras County that can, for the Chamber Mixer that will be held in our new heart center across the street at Mark Twain Medical Center, February the 19th, from 5:30 to 7:00. We'd love to see all of the people there. We'd love you to come out and meet Dr. Courtney Vergilio. She's very excited because she has built this practice, she's recruited the staff, she has developed this amazing heart center for all of our residents and beyond. It is unlike any other heart center in California, quite frankly. She was very excited, she did a lot of research, it's all-inclusive, you know, we'll be doing non-invasive procedures. But the beauty of this project is that it keeps our care here in Calaveras County. So, all of us don't have to travel out of the area for great care. We're doing great things across the street. We appreciate your support. If you have any questions, concerns, compliments, complaints, anything that we can help you with, we're working really, really hard, and we need your support, and you can approach me or any of our staff at any time. And I hope to see you all there very, very much. It's a, it's a great time for us, and you're a big part of what we're doing. So, thank you.
Nikki, could you, so everybody has a flood through the front door of the hospital, kind of explain how to get to the heart center?
That's a great question, Steve. So, I'm gonna give the point of reference as the Department of Motor Vehicles and CHP. Directly across the street is where physical therapy was. We have moved our physical therapy, we flipped with cardiac rehab. So, if you're coming to, next week, to the heart center, or any day, you wanna just come and kind of, you know, I'll give you a tour, you need to come and enter out here where the helipad is as you're going into the laboratory. That reception area, that lobby area for the laboratory, is a joint lobby area between the lab and the heart center. So, if you're coming next Thursday evening, it would be best if you entered upstairs here from the laboratory. And again, we'll give tours anytime. She's great, you guys, you really gotta come and meet her. We're really blessed to have these amazing specialists in Calaveras County, we really are. So, thank you for that question, Steve.
Thank you.
Adam Pugh with Congressman Tom Clentock. Have a couple of updates for you this morning. Earlier, or later today, 9:45 to 11:30, I will be holding office hours for public outreach at the Calaveras County Water District, 120 Toma Court. On February 18th, the Congressman will be at Oak Ridge High School in El Dorado County, holding a town hall. And then, February 19th, we will be down the Sheriff's Posse in Jamestown for a town hall. Update on which committees, I'm not entirely too sure if we informed you guys last month. We still are on Budget and Natural Resources, and he is now the Chair of Public and Federal Lanes. We are really excited for the Subcommittee Chair and to see what the next couple of years brings us. The Congressman did, on the House floor, propose Debt Prevention Act. I don't believe the House has voted on it yet. It was just proposed earlier, or late last week. So, we are still waiting on a vote, I believe. If there is any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you for coming in. My name is Peter Race from General N. I'd like to finish our discussion that was brought up last meeting concerning that it would be nice if you, finding your goodness and generous of your heart, put agenda outside a complete package of agenda. And there was a remark made about it's gonna cost money. Well, if you do wanna talk money, how much did it cost for you guys to get a new tablet? Okay? So, when you generosity, let's get that straight. These people behind me, they get to see the headlines, and they're very impressive. Makes me cry, and, you know, I realize you guys are all generous and nice, but give those folks a chance. They might only come in for one issue, or another issue. Let them take a look at the whole package, the good, the bad, and the not. Please, it won't cost you that much. All the money you're saving for making out, what, six, seven copies? Put one out there so people can see the details. Thank you. Another thing, there was a comment made, 'cause I was kind of bitching about putting taxpayers' money for bicycle tracks, and I was reminded that some supervisor loves to walk in a forest. And bless your heart, I support you on it. Walk in a forest, talk to your kids, bond with the nature and everything. But we were not talking about walking in a forest. We were talking about doing the dirty nasty byproduct of oil, putting it in the middle of the forest, so somebody can come up from San Francisco on a 10-speed bike and pedal their butts up and down in a forest because they don't wanna have a dirt bike. To me, there's a whole bunch of miles and miles of roads in this county, county roads, not maintained by the county. So, I'd rather see you folks put the money out to your constituents who are registered to vote, and you know they're not dysfunctional looking at the board. That's the primary thing. Not for make it available for somebody from San Francisco come up, because they're not gonna ride that bicycle up there. You wanna go with nature, I don't care if you float down a river share or walk in a forest. Bless your heart, do it. But don't put me in tears thinking that, oh my God, I keep you away from the forest. Do it. But don't do it, an old byproduct, dirt road, asphalt road, in the middle of the forest, and they're just gonna take it away from you. One more thing. General plan, zoning, family, and I'm glad you folks all believe in the family. Matter of fact, I would like to see more parental responsibility for those kids. Oh, relationship by blood or marriage, simple stupid. I'd like to know what is your problem with it? That was the last item of the last board last year. It has no bearing on land issue use associated with zoning, because someplace in there, I got the impression, well, we might don't get certain grants. Now, I respect the gentleman running, planning, general plan, but man, I don't think he's qualified, or any one of you qualified, to tell people, well, we're gonna change definition of the family. It was changed to one or more person living, living, living together in a dwelling with common access to a common use of all parts of the dwelling. Hey, put on that, people are gonna check up. Great, that's their right, but don't mess with my or anybody else's definition of the family. It might make it easier zoning, folks, but that's BS, okay? There's more to it. It was pushed through five, six years ago when this general plan started and failed. So, that's it. That's a good meeting. Thank you.
Little more information about IHSS. I'm gonna come back to money quite often. I told you last time, there's about $3 million dedicated to the wages of the home care providers. On top of that, there's 60 cents for every hour that home care providers work that is put in a special fund for their health care that amounts to about $180,000. That's enough health care for 64 of those 275 health care workers. There's also money involved in the public authority, that's about $200,000. There's also money involved in the social workers and the administration of IHSS, and these are all rough guesstimates, but I would say it's about $300,000 to $400,000 to pay for those positions. So, we're talking about $4 million for a program that hardly anybody knows about. You don't pay $4 million. Fortunately, the federal government pays the bulk of that money. Historically, it's been 50% federal government, 33% state government, and 17% county government, rough guesstimates again. When the stimulus money became available in about 2008 or 2009, the county's participation dropped from 17% to 13% for your contribution of this $4 million budget. When that money ran out, you went back to 17%. The Affordable Care Act became in effect, and then your contribution dropped to about 15%. In that time, we were urged to come to the Board and ask you folks to put that percentage drop, which amounts to about $50,000, back into home care, home care providers' wages. But our union did not follow back, follow up with that request. Is my time?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I'm gonna come back to money again, but I have another issue. The IHSS Advisory Committee is not able to meet because we do not have a quorum of people in order to meet. Right now, there are four applications sitting on ice for this committee, but it's not on your agenda, so you will not be appointing anybody so we can have a quorum for our next meeting. So, you gave us a four-month limit to get ourselves together. We cannot function until we have a committee and we actually have enough people for a quorum. But I'd like to encourage you all to look to your constituents for anybody who's ever had home care services, and it doesn't have to be through IHSS. It can be somebody that had an accident or had surgery and has come home and had care in the home rather than in a facility. Those people are welcome and encouraged to apply for our committee because we need their perspective, too. We need you to help us so we can do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, pardon. Okay, any other public comments?
Marty Crane, Valley Springs. This morning, we've heard about some amazing efforts going on in the community, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. Amazing things are going on, and they all impact our citizens on an individual basis in ways that we don't know about until it shows itself through self-esteem, or usually, I think that's kind of where it starts. But, but I wanted to say that, that this is where all the work gets done, out here in the weeds with all of us, where we sharpen our pencils and we actually get together and do the work and identify the issues, find solutions, and if, you know, it's, it's so encouraging and so inspiring when you get to go and be part of these efforts, and every once in a while, something happens and you are like inspired all over again. I was fortunate to be a judge for the speech contest in the academic decathlon on Saturday. We always say that our, our children are the future. If the future government is theirs, if the future community is theirs, they need to own it today. Start owning it today, because in five years, they'll be sitting where you are. They'll be making decisions all over the place, and we need them prepared and informed. So, it's happening. I was, I was so inspired, I had to ask for a number of those speeches so that we can share them, so that we can all hear what our students are saying. Then, that same day on Saturday, then I got to go to the Then, that same day on Saturday, then I got to go to the Golden Health Awards. And thank you Nikki, Nikki and Peggy Lucas and Paul for, for, and the Hospital Healthcare District and the foundation for doing this. They reach out into the community, uh, to nonprofits to, um, uh, celebrate the work that they're doing. And, and this evening, um, we honored, um, a healthcare provider and a, um, and of course, Bob Campania for his lifetime achievement award, and then five nonprofits. And of course, the volunteer center is honored to have been one of those nonprofits. But there were other efforts such as Sierra Hope and Harmony Ranch and the Murphy Senior Center and, um...
Youth mentoring program.
Yes, youth mentoring program. And the youth mentoring program, we celebrated all evening. They took away the, the award for that evening. But everyone in there was so thrilled and engaged. I was so stoked, I couldn't hardly, I couldn't hardly talk about, after we heard all of the, and I knew about all these agencies already, but I was still thrilled by what they were doing. And, um, it was all brought home and the story of nonprofits was told. So it was filmed, please see it on, on local TV. The story of nonprofits is full circle. And that's where the work gets done, not here, but we need your support. So, thank you Mark Twain Healthcare, thank you to our kids, and thank you to Lori for keeping our kids' dental going. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be, uh, routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by a board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Anybody from the public wishes to remove an item?
Four, six, and nine, please.
The sales numbers again, Joe. One more time?
Three, four, six, and nine.
Three, four, six, and nine.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Guess they're not controversial. Anybody else?
I would ask.
Anybody from the board wishes to pull the item? All right. Let's, uh, let's have a motion on, um, the remainder.
So rude.
Second. So we have a motion by Supervisor Kearney on the remainder of the consent agenda items. That would be number one, number two, seven, and eight. Right? And a second by Supervisor Wright, uh, on favor of that?
Aye.
Close. It's five-zero. And so we'll go on to, uh, item number three, Mr. Kelly.
Joe Kelly, not so much a question as an offering. Uh, when this comes about and you get through and you pick your, uh, the winning bidder to do this job, if Mr. Pakenger would contact me for use of my property at Banner Road and Mountain Ranch Road, which is just south of, uh, where the bridge will be going up for a staging area, then we can come to some kind of term as to allowing them to be there and be there legally. Because I'm sure if not, they will be parked on my property anyhow. So I might as well make an offering to you folks, not to collect any money, but to be indemnified for one thing, and also that if they do it, they follow all the normal procedures of construction parking. They got leaking material, leaking equipment, they put material under it to catch it. So I'm making an offer of that, so they won't have too far to travel if it can't be done right there at Ware Guard Road.
Robert Pakenger, Public Works. I'd like to thank Mr. Kelly for his offer. As is typical with all construction projects, contractors are required to establish a staging area. They'll work with the local landowners in the area to see what's available and come to terms with the local landowner. But, it's good to know ahead of time that there is something available nearby and will let the contractor know that Mr. Kelly is, uh, willing to negotiate with them. Thank you.
Couple of slow questions. Uh, this whole bridge business was established at, I think it was somebody got a, public folks at that time got a pay rate because they did such a good job, and a couple of weeks later, he decided to resign. This is still the residue of it, folks. Most of you weren't present at those days. But, let's talk about something. Uh, you're looking at two million, three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand, three-hundred-twenty-five dollars total taxpayers' funds. Uh, I asked before, was any of, this particular bridge or any of the bridge considered by the state as an unsaved assembly? The state comes out and checks these bridges for its, you know, okay or not safe and so on. I never got an answer for it, okay? Another thing is that to justify taxpayers' output of, of this, uh, almost two-and-a-half million dollars, anybody that a traffic count? What is the traffic count? I mean, it's a very complicated issue, that a supply and demand. Is there a demand for this? Number of bridges were proposed and people say, we haven't used it for twenty years. I'd just like to know, is the justification? Plus, does the county have the two-hundred-seventy-two thousand dollars, two-hundred-seventy-two thousand, nine-hundred-ninety, seven-hundred-ninety-five dollars sitting in the budget and budgeted for it? If you do, great. You gotta spend the money somehow. Okay? Is there a demand? Or is it justified? And do you have the money?
Railroad Flat Road is a major collector, so it's an important roadway in the county's, uh, circulation system. I don't have the traffic counts with me, but I could make those available. I do, we do have traffic counts, yes, and it is, like I said before, a major collector. As far as funding is concerned, we have funds set aside for the project. This pro- this road is one of the roads in the Road Impact Medication Fee Program, so we also have those funds that we can use for the local match for the project.
Robert, when you get, when you bring a project forward, like a bridge or road, is it part of the process to do a traffic study on it?
Yes, sir. There's always a traffic study, traffic counts. Um, the, the actual count, the actual traffic on the bridge dictates to some extent the geometry, the width of the bridge. If there's not enough traffic on the bridge, we can't build a full two-lane bridge. In this case, there is sufficient, um, there are sufficient cars going over that bridge that we're required to build the two-lane bridge as described in the document.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The information you just relayed to the board, is that available and so on, concerned citizens should ask that question?
Yes, sir. That's always available.
Can we just send you an email or something?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Joe Kelly, again, I apologize for coming up, but Robert brought something up about RIM fees. Is there dedicated Mountain Ranch Road Ware Guard RIM fees for that, or does it come out of the RIM fee overall budget? Or not budget, but collections? Because it's always shown as desires of monies needed for the different projects that would be on the RIM fee schedule. But I have never heard, or I don't remember, that these monies are dedicated for that particular project when they're collected, or that they go directly into the RIM fee account and then are expended that way as to any project that comes available. Thank you.
RIM fee dollars as they're collected go into an overall account, and then as, uh, according to the board's priorities and the projects that come online, they're expended in those projects. There's a certain amount that can be spent using the RIM fee dollars, they're established by a percentage. These percentages were, uh, determined years ago, and so what, what that means is that as development pays into the RIM fee, only a certain amount of development's fees can go towards these projects. They're limited.
But these projects that are predetermined are already set aside money, right?
When we come up with these project budgets, we determine how much we can use from the available funding sources, and that's how we determine the amount that we can use from
Thank you.
I do have one other question. Uh, Robert, can you tell me on these funds too, if I recall, and if it's for these bridge funds, that, is it hard cash or can you use staff time towards this match?
Usually, they're hard costs, but there, it's a reimbursement. So staff time, the time, the, the funds that we use for spending staff time are included in the overall amount of the dollars for each project. So, to some extent, we do get reimbursement from the state for staff time.
For staff, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other comments from the board?
Make a motion to approve item number three, adopting a resolution approving plans and specifications and authorizing Public Works to solicit formal bids for the construction of the Railroad Flat Bridge.
Second. So we have a, um, first by Supervisor Pony and a second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, number four, approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of Class C El Dorado National two-forty transit bus through the California Association for Coordinated Transportation Cal Act. Moradongo Bay Transit Authority Vehicle Purchasing Cooperative.
Joe Kelly, my questions are, what is the projected route for this bus and what it's, what's going to be its time of use? As we've had discussions in the past about up in District Two, people being able to get down, maybe to come down at night and being able to have transportation back. Will this be used for that, or will, uh, what will be, again, projected route, time of use? Thank you. Time and, and time of use and use altogether.
Debra Mullin, Public Works. Um, an answer to Mr. Kelly's questions. The, um, the route is going to be from San Andreas down, uh, twelve to twenty-six and a loop through Stockton, um, that will hit various shopping center, medical facilities, uh, and the regional transportation, um, stops for Amtrak and, uh, Greyhound, and then back to San Andreas. And there'll be, um, kind of a rest time for the driver so that people, the same people going down to do a few errands can take the same bus back. The time of the, um, runs, we haven't determined yet. This action today is to order the bus, it'll take four months at least to build the bus and deliver it to us. Um, in that time, we'll have, fine-tune the route. But, um, many of the points of the route are explained in the inner fees, inner-city service feasibility study that I'd be happy to share a copy of with, um, that we're gonna fine-tune the route to make it, as Mr. Kelly would like to see, have good connectivity with our Calaveras transit routes. Any questions?
One question. Uh, these two buses are replacing existing buses or using?
This is one bus and it's going to be a new service.
Okay.
So, it's not replacing any of the fleet.
I also had a question. How much is this bus costing and is it coming out of general funds? Are there other sources of income paying for this purchase? And is it a new or used bus?
Okay, answer to Bonnie's question. Um, the cost of the bus is ninety-three thousand, five-hundred-fifty-two dollars. It's a two thousand fifteen, brand-new, um, and it is funded by, um, a, an FTA grant, uh, fifty-three eleven F, the inner-city service, um, and the portion, the local match will be paid by state, uh, PTMI SEA funds. So no general fund.
Any other questions or comments by the public from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, so, um, Supervisor Pony made a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Class C El Dorado National two-forty transit bus through the California Association for Coordinated Transportation Cal Act. Um, Moradongo Bay Transit Authority MBTA Vehicle Purchasing Cooperative. Just Supervisor Olivera second to that, right? That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Close. Five-o. Favor. Okay, uh, Bonnie, you have, uh, the next one. So this is approve plans and specifications to authorize Public Works to solicit formal bids for construction of the Red Hill landfill, sell a final cover report project.
Yes. Knowing that there's already some kind of facility at Red Hill, I was wondering, are they expanding? Are they, uh, improving? And, um, what is the estimated costs, uh, what is the ex- expected cost for this project?
Good morning. This project is a repair project of a slide that occurred some years ago. So, that's, there's no expansion, it's in an area that has been closed already. We are required by the state to come in and fix the slide. The cost of the, the cost of the project, the estimated cost of the project is about the two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. That is, according to the engineer's cost estimates. Of course, we're hopeful that when the contractors come in and start bidding, we could get something that's a little bit better than that.
If I remember right, Robert, there was a fire in this general area, which then later caused the, the problem with the ground, the slide?
That's correct. That's correct. But that fire occurred some years ago and...
About four, five years ago.
Mr. Pakenger?
Yes, sir.
As a result of that fire, this repair is geared to meet state requirements. That's correct?
That's correct.
At the time of the fire, do we determine the cause of fire and we can actually initiate an insurance claim if we had coverage for this repair? Do you have, do you have that information?
No, sir, I don't know exactly what caused the fire. I couldn't tell you if we could have, we could have pursued a claim at that time, I don't know. Unfortunately, at this point, now the state is involved, and we're meeting the demands of the state and making progress on this repair.
In the event that we have a landfill fail for obvious reasons other than the fire, would that be an insurable event that the county would be able to make a claim on our insurance?
What, what we have are funds that are called the closure and post-closure maintenance funds that are set aside within the solid waste budget. Those are dedicated for actually monitoring and making sure that the landfill in its closed state remains safely closed.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I, I was out there yesterday looking at this, knowing that...
I was out there yesterday looking at this, knowing that you were going to vote on this. And just so everybody understands, and I know you're telling them, this landfill is closed because there's a transfer station there, so it might be a little deceiving to think that we're still using that. What Robert's doing is correcting a problem that the state is directing him to do. And it's not like a choice that we have. It has to be done because an exposed landfill is slipping, correct?
That's correct.
And this is going to cover it up, so. And another thing I asked too, that made me feel pretty good, my question, when I was looking at this, when we take these bids, there's a 3% in the county code, there's a 3% allowance to make sure the bid goes to local companies. So let's, hopefully the, I know of a couple of companies in the county that can take care of it. Hopefully, they'll get the pencil sharpened and we put local people who work it to do.
That's correct, sir.
I have another question. Maybe our CIO surely can answer this. Is there any provisions in contracts for the county where we can designate a percentage number of local labor force?
Not specifically in the purchasing or the contract code. However, in the code is the 3% local bid of preference that Supervisor Kearney was referring to. But there's no specific language in the current code about requiring local labor within, via an external contractor.
Is that a doable situation? Should we pursue it?
We're looking at revisions to bring forward on the purchasing policy to the board, and we certainly can look at that.
Thank you. You're very generous.
Yes, there is none as well. Still public comment?
Olivera, thank you for that because it would be nice if we can put in some for recent reference or reference in general to some of that. That would be, I want to see who's going to complain against it, okay? I want to see it publicly. The other thing is that brought up another question. This insurance business. Do we, or if we don't, why don't we have insurance on county properties when it gets damaged? I know it's been a couple of years. Now, I know it's a total drought and we're dying of thirst, but some of these woods and trees might start falling in a neighborhood or other county properties. Shouldn't we or do we have insurance on county properties? I mean, I have a homeowner's insurance, and I'm sure you guys don't have that much extra money or give up your any benefits to cover the loss. I mean, it's just common sense, a business sense. I'm not criticizing anybody, okay? Don't get me wrong. But it might be a good idea to have insurance. Thank you.
If I can answer that, the, we do, the county does carry property insurance on our facilities and buildings. As to whether or not this particular incident was covered under that insurance policy, or if a claim was filed, I would have to research that because I'm not aware.
I had two questions. One was the $240,000, does that money coming from the general fund? And is there any environmental concern about this slide? And would there be any resources from an environmental standpoint that might cover some of those costs?
The funds for this repair come entirely from the integrated waste management budget. The, as far as environmental concerns, of course, this is a closed landfill. The Water Quality Control Board is on top of this. So there's, there's, there is that as far as the environmental concern, but we're working with them to make sure that this repair will cease to cause any problems.
Any other public comments? Any comments from the board? All right, so I have a motion for, to approve plans and specifications and authorize Public Works to solicit formal bids for construction of the Red Hill landfill cell, a final cover repair project.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Pony, second by Supervisor Kearney. Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? So it's five zero in favor. Mr. Kelly, number six, approve plans and specifications and authorize, adopt a resolution to authorize the board chair to execute a letter of commitment in support of City of Angels Food Emergency Response Grant application through the State Department of Water Resources.
Joe Kelly, this is a discussion of key role in management of flood emergencies in the jurisdictions for local agencies as first responders and qualifying for federal management agency disaster funds. And this thing has so much verbiage in it that it just boggled my mind. As you can see, I've got it yellowed, I've got a red underline. It bothers me a lot. Bother me a whole lot that you folks are bringing this forward to assist and be partner up with Angels Camp when you can't even take care of your own backyard. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, folks, and you know what I'm talking about. So with that, is the county considering an application to FEMA as a non-partnering with Angels Camp but on its own? Why don't you reassess the Lobo Lane caused flooding issue in District One as to the information gathered in 1998 west end of county by OES, Clay Hawkins, and others that were there witnessed the flooding problem of the illegal water retention facility obstruction in Nassau Creek. They stood there and watched two feet of water come over Lobo Lane, the Lobo Lane Bridge, the illegal bridge. Yet there's no mention of it in the 1998 reports. I looked at paper and I listened to the board meeting hearings. I didn't hear a report about it, but I know it happened because there is a witness that is still available that was there when it happened and Clay Hawkins was there, and so were the other associates, I believe, out of code enforcement. So this, and then by doing this, you would provide a grant application, so by making application to provide a grant application to render the illegal water retention facility obstruction in Nassau Creek back to its natural state of a original creek alignment without manmade obstruction, no flooding, or enforce your flood ordinance or your, and your flood claim management ordinance. This is, that's why I started out the day with 2015 and the question that I asked, compensable Ten years, folks, it's getting a little old, it's getting a little rusty. And oh, by the way, I'm going to be having a discussion with Xing Liu, the FEMA nine Calaveras planner. Kathy Schaefer apparently is no longer there. So what I'd said in the past, only a few of you may know of it, but I was given a sort of chastised by Ms. Callaway, well, Kathy Schaefer appears to be gone. And Xing Liu, or Xing Liu is the lady that's handling it. So I'm going to be making a call to her. I am going to check with Deborah Lewis, see if she has time when I make the call, and we'll make, or an open phone call so she can hear what Ms. Liu wants to talk to me about over a letter I submitted in December of last year through Congressman McClintock's office. So the flooding issue, yes, I support that you do offer this to Angels Camp, but I also chastise you and am very disturbed with this whole county, the county board, boards, past, present, and potential future for not doing your damn job, public health, safety, general welfare, this history. That's even called out in your general plan. So somebody start telling me what you're doing so that I know what's going on because it's getting to a critical point. Thank you.
Peter, here's Jen on the long as we're hashing up old stuff. I have a question. I don't know if there's any reference from Angels Camp. That Angels Camp sent a letter of commitment in support when the three supervisors had a little discussion about Mr. Longren's office? Was, did they send a letter of support when Mr. Callaway, Mr. Tofanelli, and Mr. Spellman had a little discussion about Longren's?
Is this on item six?
Yes, it is because it is flood issue. And I'm questioning, was Angels Camp anyway partnered up with the county requesting the grant? Now, they asking you to support them for a grant, that they do the same thing for you, a grant for flood issues? I mean, I'm sure they have a lot of flood issue problem around Angels Camp. Do you know how much flood issue you have in this county? Maybe you should bring out the minutes, what was discussed between Mr. Callaway, Tofanelli, Spellman, Army Corps of Engineer, and FEMA. I mean, that's the least we could, they supported us, didn't they? Then you should support them. Maybe you can look at the minutes from that meeting. I'm sure you all seen copies of it, right? Thank you.
I'm sorry that perhaps that board package may have turned out a little bit too worried. I try to make them not so obtuse, but every now and then I, I get a little perhaps too worried there. But the purpose of this application is to work with the City of Angels, and they, what they're trying to do is they're spearheading this grant application. And what we hope to achieve is to have a meshing of our emergency response operations plans with the City of Angels and with the county. There's going to be supplies that are going to be purchased that will be county supplies. There will be some message boards in case there's a flooded area, we'll have the ability to get some message boards, sandbags. We're going to try to develop some communication systems where it's a seamless communication between the City of Angels and the county. Currently, there seems to be some issues. We're going to try to iron those out. The main thing with this application is some funding to allow us to have some joint exercises between our emergency response personnel and the City of Angels emergency response personnel regarding some flood issue. So in the future, if there were flood issues in the county, we would hope that we'd be able to use whatever we learn from these exercises to help us better deal with something within the county. Mr. Race's comments. I do not know if, if there was outreach to the City of Angels for any support. I don't have any information on that.
Mr. Packager, I understood the agenda item very clearly, as you stated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. He deserves every cent.
George Frye, the only question I had about item six is, I see the entire city council meetings, and I don't ever recall the city council taking this up. So I would suggest, I don't know whether Robert has minutes from a city council meeting that took this up and voted to go, go ahead with this project. So unless I missed a meeting, I'm curious about that.
Yes, sir. The city council will be discussing this item after February 17th, 2015 meeting.
Any more public comments? Thank you, Mr. Packager, for bringing it back on task. Any more comments?
I have a comment. Sure. I see this as a great opportunity to partner up with, with the City of Angels in regards to this effort. I think we can both learn a lot from each other. Part of this resolution is to be able to establish some preliminary work in regards to if we should have an emergency situation. Looks like there's some opportunities for the supplies, which we can all desperately use, whether it's within the city or the county. I like the drill aspect of this and utilizing. I see where transit is noted in here, which I think is a key component in this kind of planning process in the event of a, of a flood emergency that we have, that we're prepared as best as we can be. So I, I think this is a good joint venture project pursuing. You know, I do recognize Mr. Kelly's frustration and hopefully from this particular use of monies and these things that we want to do here will, will better serve the county overall too.
I think we experienced a situation this last storm that dictates that we better be prepared. Personal contact with first responders due to the emergencies of this storm, even in Valley Springs, all the way from Copperopolis, Murphy's area. The coordinated training for first responders and the training exercises and the materials, I think, are warranted. And it's just a good preparedness plan that we should incorporate. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Pony to approve and adopt a resolution. I second the motion. To authorize the board chair to execute a letter of commitment in support of the City of Angels Flood Emergency Response Grant application through the State Department of Water Resources. And the second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Five zero passes. Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda number nine, agriculture. Approve a budget transfer to the amount of $55,000 from the Department, number 076, Department of Public Works to Department of 42, Department of Agriculture to cover costs associated with roadside spraying as per attached budget transfer form. This action requires a four-fifth Board of Supervisors. Mr. Kelly?
This talks about the cost of it, $55,000, and cover, cover costs associated with roadside spraying. So is the dollar amount spray product only, or what other associated costs are involved in this expenditure? Thank you.
Kevin Wright, Act Commissioner, Department of Agriculture. The $55,000 represents more than just the cost of the chemicals. The chemicals, we've calculated to be about $20,000. The other costs would be maintenance of our equipment, gas and oil. And since one of our employees who would normally be doing insect trapping at that time would now be driving a truck that's used for spraying, we'd have to hire a person to do his job that he normally would be doing. So some of that money's for that too. Of the $55,000, it's already, we were asked by the road department to do the work, and we work under the direction of the road department. They provide us a list of roads. There's over 200 and, about 250 miles of county roads and another 50 or 60 miles of CSA roads, County Service Agency roads, the county service agencies. They pay the road department for the work that we do, so the revenue is coming back So, revenue's coming back in for the, for that particular money. The other money's already in the budget. Two years ago, we spent $15,000 to, uh, to upgrade our roadside rig that we spray with. It had deteriorated from sun damage over the course of the previous probably 10 years, the plastic, the spray nozzles, all that stuff. Our truck is ready to roll. The, uh, person who we do have, who, uh, does the roadside spraying, we do it with one person, he has done that work for at least, uh, six years. Last year, we didn't do any work, because it wasn't in the budget. But, uh, previous to that, uh, probably for about six years, he had done the person doing most of that work. He's well qualified. We have very little complaints for the work that he does. We know where the areas are that, uh, people don't want to be sprayed. And we also, uh, my driver goes and talks to the people in the CSAs directly so that we have a good understanding of, uh, the work that they want to do. Thank you.
So, part, I have a good question for you.
Yes, sir.
Part of that budget, uh, or part of this money will come out of the CSA, the CSA rep funds, right?
Correct.
Okay. What if those CSA funds have no money of? Do they, do you still spray those particular areas?
No, if they, if we don't, uh, if they don't pay, we don't spray.
Okay. So, so one particularly, uh, well-funded CSA won't be spraying the others that aren't funded, correct?
Correct. We spray by, uh, we keep records of the amount of time and the chemicals that we use for each CSA. Not all the CSAs, uh, we don't spray for all the CSAs, just the ones that request.
Okay.
And I think there's, uh, four or five that, that do. Would you like to list them?
Yeah, I have all of them, yeah.
Okay. Just a second. Uh, CSA one, Rancho Calaveras, CSA two, Par 20, CSA four, Diamond 20, CSA eight, Springs, uh, Golden Gate, Spring Hill, and, uh, CSA five, Mochill.
Thank you.
Sir, before you walk away, I am assuming, and please tell me I'm correct, that your Hazmat certification is up to date with your labors and dealing with, uh, our poisons and insecticides and that certification for your company?
Well, sir, um, we are actually the people who do the regulation for that particular work, and so we have to set a high standard, which we do.
Thank you very much. All right.
Hi, Steve Hutchings from Copperopolis. Um, the question I had is it looks like a portion of this funding will be to hire a seasonal worker for doing the sharpshooter pest detection. And we're probably gonna be spraying next year. So, is this gonna be a line item that comes up every year that we need an additional $55,000? Or will this be built into the budget going forward?
Um, because we didn't spray last year, it was, uh, kind of a surprise to us when, and we didn't have it in our budget for this year until Scott Anderson came and asked me if we would spray the roads. So, normally, like, um, I would have a conversation with, uh, Scott and the road crew before the budget is made, and I would ask them if they had the money in the, uh, in their budget for the year. And if it was, then we would put that in our own budget. However, like I say, this year was kind of, uh, a surprise to us, and so that's why we had to do the budget transfer.
So, going forward, it should be included between Public Works and Ag?
When the budgets are put together, those discussions are ongoing as to whether Public Works has the sufficient funding to do the roadside spraying. As I recall, one year, they thought the road crews could actually top the weeds, and I think they've determined that roadside spraying is more economical.
I have a question that, um, involves this, and I get asked quite frequently and don't exactly know how to respond. How can we find what's in the CSA funds on a current basis? Like, uh, you know, what, it's not like, uh, people want to know that their money's being taken care of, basically, that, that put into it on their, uh, tax schedule, and I don't know how I answer that, frankly.
We keep a current accounting of all of our budgets and where we, what we spent on a monthly basis. We measure that against the percentage of the year, for example, to make sure we're at 50% of the year, that we're at 50% revenues and so forth and so on. Each CSA budget is its own separate unit, and it goes through that same analysis. And we can make that available to you.
Okay, so, so if they, remind, people that are living in CSA one give you a call and want to know what's in that, you can tell them within reason fairly publicly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Robert.
We can run reports at any given time. That provides an account summary of what was budgeted in a budget unit, whether it's a CASA or any other budget unit, and what has been expended today. We have the ability to drill down on any particular line item to determine exactly what those expenses are, and we can run a fund balance sheet to find out what the overall fund equity is in that particular fund.
Thank you.
It's one of my favorite subject matters, CSA one. The S President and will be in the future, uh, since it's, uh, for the benefit of our nonprofit mutual benefit corporation, CSA one directly, basically Rancho of 3,000 folks. Uh, I believe the original LAFCO approval was that, I don't know if you folks know it, but you elected yourself to be a trustee if you address your responsibility and due diligence for CSA one. Did you folks know it? Thank you, that's what I figured.
I, you've never let me forget it.
Oh, believe me. If you don't know it, some more people are gonna know it. CSA one's supposed to have a separate hearing and budget report each year for what they going, for their debt and what they're gonna do. Yet, for many years, all of us said it was inconvenient. Uh, but I don't want to pick on this gentleman because he has nothing to do with it. But I do have a pick on you folks, as long as you brought this CSA one letter, because a little minor detail that, uh, I haven't seen a report. What is LAFCO required you? I've never seen a report. What is the additional benefit that CSA one's supposed to get? I know what they paying. And, uh, the new rule been, let's say, rewritten again, and I want you to see it, read it, and you all want, I want you all read it. But going back to the original, this lead control, some of the fire district who are quite familiar with, uh, fire hazards along the road, they have the capacity and the capability and the need for additional funds for service that they could quite well do. Hazmat approved and all that safety stuff, they capable of. And because there's no definite time that you have to do it between 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM, they do have a few hours here and there to take care of their local roads in their fire district. I'm just throwing it out for an ideal. They need the money. You know they need the money. They could do the service quite adequately, and I want you to consider it down the road because they are quite capable, available, and would go for a good cause. I just made a friend who is not gonna be my friend anymore.
Consider it a lie.
So, I have a question. The CSAs, they have meetings, right? Yes. Have they, uh, do they request, um, this information from us?
The ones in my district do.
Right? Yeah, that, because they can give a report, you know, quarterly reports, actually.
Yeah. Uh, when I asked Chair, he was very on top of where the money that they had and what was available, and, uh, he answered every question I had. I believe it's first Wednesday, but for CSA one. If you, if you don't know the, uh, meeting time, see me later and look it up just to verify it, but, uh...
I'm gonna get a change of, I guess, that is paid.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
He might want to. Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Make some motion to approve.
I'll second.
And Supervisor Pony seconds, approve, uh, budget transfer in amount of $55,000 from Department 76 to Department of Public Works, uh, 76, Department of Public Works to Department 42, Department of Agriculture, to cover costs associated with roadside spraying as per attached budget transfer form. This action requires four-fifths Board of Supervisors approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's five zero. Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we move to the regular agenda because there's, uh, gonna be a presentation.
Just heard you said something from your neighbor. There's already a burden.
Well, there is that problem, too.
Okay. So, um, we'll start the regular agenda, and, uh, we have a presentation. Mr. Slocom.
So, this is, uh, number 10, adopt resolution supporting CALNET broadband projects in Calaveras County.
Indeed. Um, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members, staff. I am Daryl Slocom, and I'm here today representing Central Sierra Connect broadband. Um, Central Sierra Connect, um, is a program that is funded by the California Advanced Services Fund. We're a grant-funded program, and we are tasked with doing outreach for technology, technology adoption, uh, being an evangelist for technology. And as a component of that, um, we do outreach for broadband availability. The largest single component of the CASF is for broadband infrastructure projects, to help fund broadband infrastructure projects by providing matching grant funding. And today specifically, what I'm here to talk to you about and request your support for an application from an ISP to add infrastructure to our area. I've been here in the past and addressed the board, but because we have so many board members, I want to make sure that you fully understand who we are as Central Sierra Connect and what we're tasked to do. Um, I've kind of given an overview, but in essence, um, we've been working for several years on this particular project. And again, specifically, we're trying to help providers that are interested in grant funding. And for those of you who have been on the board, you'll know that we've not been successful over the last few years. We've not had any applicants. And we're excited this year to have an ISP who is actually, um, applying for funding for projects in all of the counties that we serve, which is the Central Sierra Connect region, Western Alpine, Amador, um, Calaveras, Tuomea, and Mariposa Counties. As it says in the resolution, um, Calaveras County ranks very low, um, approximately 54 out of 58 counties for broadband availability. And broadband is just defined as high-speed internet, um, which is in essence, um, allowing people to use the internet the way most people use the internet. We have some areas of our county that have very good coverage, and then we have a lot of, we have, have a lot of voids. And CASF is specifically designed to, um, fill those voids. In other words, you cannot apply for funding in areas that the CASF fund administrators, which is the CPUC, that they have deemed to be a covered area. So, today, I am here asking for your support for a grant application from CAL.net, which is an, uh, Eldorado County Internet Service Provider. I have representatives here from CAL.net to answer any technical questions that you may have about their application that I'm not able to answer. Um, I can tell you that, um, CAL.net is a well-established Internet Service Provider in Eldorado County, having been there for several years. Um, we have reviewed them and their, um, operations and found them to be sound, both, um, from a technology standpoint and from a physical standpoint. Um, of course, all of that will be fully vetted by the CPUC as a component of their application, as will the, the, um, projected areas that they are offering, um, for coverage. Because as I mentioned before, if, if the CPUC determines that they are already covered, then that those all areas are not eligible for any grant funding. Um, the way the CPUC conducts that process is through, um, their broadband mapping program, which is in essence done by census block. And so, when we're talking about the areas that CAL.net is proposing in Calaveras County, um, some of the census blocks cover areas that have certain component of it is covered, but a larger area is not. And so, I, I'd just like you to try to understand that, that, um, while we're presenting maps to you today, they're, um, they're over, they're overviews of the general geographic area that CAL.net is anticipating that they're going to be covering. So, beyond that, um, I'd like to know if you have any questions about either Central Sierra Connect or CAL.net or the application process itself?
Well, why don't we just go through your slideshow?
We don't have a slideshow. What we have is the, the maps which represent the basic area and is outlined in, um, our resolution proposal.
These are maps from CPUC?
These are maps that we will, that CAL.net will be submitting to CPUC as part of their application process. But these maps and the areas that CAL.net had determined to include in their application were based off of, um, the CPUC map, number one. Um, number two, the mapping program that Central Sierra Connect conducted where we, we did a, a boots-on-the-ground outreach program. Um, and part of why we did that, and what I've talked about in the past, is that there are some errors on the, the CPUC map. And the way the CPUC told us we could overcome those was to show areas that were currently showed, showing as being covered that were not. And so, we've done that process, and so some of what CAL.net is submitting are areas that, um, we know to not be covered. Um, and we've, they will be providing information to CPUC to reinforce them.
So, does this prevent any other, uh, local providers from entering the area as well?
Well, there's nothing to prevent any Internet Service Provider from entering any area. Um, there are requirements specific to the, applying for a CASF grant. And as previously mentioned, CAL.net has been the only Internet Service Provider that's expressed interest in the program.
Is that due to the requirements of the grant?
I can't say specifically why, but I, I can, you're, you're, I think you're on the right track. There are, there are numerous requirements for the grant, and I can tell you that CAL.net have already invested thousands of dollars and hundreds of, of man, staff hours, uh, in just preparing their application. And for most Internet Service Providers, that's, that's just something that they don't have the staff available to do. And I will add that CAL.net has done all of that with absolutely no guarantee of any success on the grant itself. So, they are in essence, uh, making a gamble on, on this particular venture.
Sir, does any other ISPs even apply, or how is your program to outreach to other ISPs? Is there any procedure for that?
Yeah, we, we, Central Sierra Connect have been conducting outreach over the years and contact, contacting Internet Service Providers, bringing them into our broadband summit, telling them about the CASF, um, grant funding process and opportunity, and, um, encouraging any of those who are interested to apply for the funds.
Now, is that done by email, by, what means is that done?
All of those, all those mechanisms, yeah. We've had, uh, email correspondence, we have newsletters, we have online presence, we have a steering committee. Um, the board has been, your board has been actively involved in the process in the past, including attending meetings both within our region and outside our region on behalf of Calaveras County to become more informed of broadband and grant funding opportunities.
Can you explain the, the matter to that?
Yep. Ken, do you want to do that?
Sure.
This is Ken Garnett, who is the Chief Technology Officer for CAL.net.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Ken Garnett. Let me get a pointer here. So California Public Utilities Commission does a survey semi-annually of broadband availability and publishes their results every six months. This is from the most recent survey from about eight months ago, published in December. They classify census blocks as either being served, underserved, or unserved. The definition of served is that community or households can get at least six megabits down, one and a half megabits up speed at their location.
Excuse me, sir, did you speak in the mic?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So the definition of served is that a person can get six megabits down and one and a half megabits up of speed. Counties that they, now they survey all the internet providers, including the cellular providers, so people like AT&amp;T for DSL and for cell phones, people like Verizon. They request data from small independent Internet Service Providers statewide. All the data that they collect, they put in these maps. And from that data, they determine whether or not somebody has adequate service for broadband. If, if they have less than six megabits available, according to the providers, they classify that as underserved. If they have only dial-up speeds essentially, they classify that as unserved. On these maps, you see several colors, yellow and dirty yellow and green and bright green. The yellow and dirty yellow areas, this is most of the map there, are classified as underserved, meaning they have broadband, but it's not adequate. It's less than six megabits and it's more than dial-up. The green areas up here are classified as unserved, meaning they have, according to the data that they have, no Internet service available at all, I mean, no high-speed broadband internet. This little blue area over here by Arnold, that's what Darrell was talking about a moment ago. That is actually classified by the CPUC as being served, but the residents in the community and the ground truth thing that he has done is shown that that is, that data is not correct. And so in this particular area, we're proposing to serve that as well and we have Darrell's data to justify our assertion that that is, that the CPUC's data is incorrect. And that's basically it. The different shades have to do with the population density.
So the map is difficult to read outside of, we have San Andreas and we're kind of guessing where the rest of every place is. It'd be nice to have some more layers on there so you can tell where the roads, the communities were. So where is West Point, for instance?
I'm not familiar with West Point.
Okay. Yeah, it's up, up that way. So there's pine grove, okay, that's good. So the area, yeah, I mean, the map just really isn't that useful for me. That's most of my district, a lot of that area isn't in my district, but it's hard to tell where anything is. And I know at my house in Grove Flat, I have, you know, Volcano, DSL, so, but I, it looks like I would fall into yellow, maybe, I don't know. Anybody tell? Where green, where towns are?
Green's a little injured.
Well, I just, I mean, it's hard, I mean, I kind of vaguely get it, but, so you're saying that whole area with yellow, maybe this, we'll just clarify, the yellow and the other, the other dirty brown thing?
Yeah.
That is underserved or not served?
Underserved.
Underserved.
Green is unserved.
And so the, but the little places where there's no color, just the map in between there, that is served?
So places where there's no, no color are either served or there's no population there. There are no households. So up here in the east, obviously, it's unpopulated.
Right, there's forest land, yeah.
Right.
But then that yellow, yeah, so that's, that's not accurate. So the little green triangles are served?
No, these little green triangles here are actually mountain tops. So these are mountain tops here, or peaks, according to the Google map.
Could you review where the data came from? Did it step, step that?
Yes, the data comes from contribution, data contributed by the service providers.
By questionnaire or survey or?
There is a requirement from the CPUC that all service providers fill out a form every six months that specifies by address and, well, they have two requirements. One, by address where all their customers are, and number two, by location of where, if they happen to be a wireless provider, where all their towers are.
Okay.
And so they use that data to determine broadband availability statewide.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning the desire, you know, for there to be more broadband, you know, in, in the county. You know, that's a, I just, the map is not that useful to determine what's going on.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I need to add though, that the, the actual submission to the CPUC is again by census block with specific addresses and a specific scenario for that area. And so ultimately, they, they are the ones who determine whether or not that area qualifies. So that's why, and there is a, there is a lag in, with the CPUC posting new data to their map. And so part of what cal.net is doing is where they're waiting until the very latest data has been uploaded to the map so that their submission is as reflective as possible of areas of need. Because what they don't want to do is apply for any areas that are covered and then have that compromise their proposal.
Mr. Slocombe, it's my understanding that there are only one ISP that you're working with right now, but that's CalNet?
There's only one ISP that is applying for CASF funding, correct. We, we have worked with and we are working with a number of ISPs in general terms as far as helping them with outreach and helping them to help create a bridge between their capability and the consumer itself. That is a different level of engagement and obligation than supporting someone who's applying for the funding. Because again, our funding comes from the entity that will be granting the application and they've tasked us with supporting any applicants for their, for their funds.
So you vet the applicants before recommending?
We do, not, not to the same level that they do, but we, like I said, we do some, we do some preliminary investigation as to the stability of the entity and how they're viewed by their customer base and the technology, just probably more on their behalf than anything else, just so we can counsel them on what the prospects are for their success.
There's some questions. How much is a grant for?
This particular grant, which covers, this is going to be a combined grant for parts of Amador and Calaveras County.
Correct.
And I think it's about a $3 million dollar.
The combined grant for Amador and Calaveras is going to be about $2.5 million.
$2.5. And those are for matching funds, so again, part of what cal.net has to prove is that they have the, the financial wherewithal to pay their portion of the construction costs.
Any idea how much goes to Calaveras in this grant?
About 75% of that.
Okay.
It's a relatively modest area of Amador County that they're proposing to serve.
Okay. And can you tell me specifically, when you talk about building infrastructure, what it's going for? Is it towers, underground lines?
There will be no underground lines. It's, it's towers primarily, and that will be a combination of populating existing towers and in some cases proposing construction of new towers, which would go through the normal permitting process in order to.
So primarily towers?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And so when we talk about other providers, and honestly, when this got posted on the agenda, it seemed like other providers came forward.
Mm-hmm.
So if I understand what you're saying is that anyone who's a provider, ISP provider in Calaveras or in this service area that we're representing can apply for this kind of grant application?
Absolutely.
So how often can they apply? Is there a certain time of the year where applications are open for applying?
Yeah, that's a great question. In the past, there's been a hard date for applications. The last one we had was February 1st of 2013. But CPUC has implemented a new procedure where there is a rolling application. So as long as they have funds left in, in the CASF, which that, they are diminishing, the funds are going away, any provider can submit an application at any time, providing their criteria.
So two months from now, somebody could apply for something?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then the other kind of thought that was brought out is that sometimes it's perceived there's too much in one area, i.e., I'll pick on Forest Meadows.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have several that are covering Forest Meadows now and it looks like this grant has the opportunity to cover more of Forest Meadows. Is that true or not? I mean, is there any kind of review or overview to make sure we're not concentrating all of our efforts in just a smaller geographical area?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I can tell you that my experience is I'm hearing from virtually no one that we have too much coverage. I'm hearing much the opposite. Again, the, when you, when you focus on a specific area, you need to understand, or hopefully you can try to understand, that we're talking about comprehensive coverage for the, for the entire area as opposed to spot coverage for one or two or four residences within a specific subdivision. We're trying to cover, and CASF is trying to cover as many people as possible, utilizing the funds as prudently as they can. So we're not attempting to cover areas that are already covered and CASF and CPUC certainly is not going to allow us to do that through their vetting process that they have.
Okay. And so, so I know, because I'm understanding, trying to understand the techie world a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah.
So when we talk about ISP-type providers, so those are people like My Mother Load, Gold Rush, H-Star, AT&amp;T?
You're doing pretty well. It's not My Mother Load though, it's, it's Mother Load Internet.
Okay, Mother Load Internet.
Right?
Okay. See, they all run together in my mind, so.
And you're, you're on the right track.
So those are all folks that could apply for these kinds of funds?
Yes, absolutely.
And so on and so forth. And it's, it's through you then that you're offering some technical assistance on how to apply for these particular grants?
I don't know if I'd call it technical assistance, but assistance.
Assistance, okay.
You're doing great and you're asking great questions. I'd just like to add or clarify one thing, which is when you're saying an area is already covered, you, you need to go the additional step of talking about what that means.
Right.
So for instance, if they're covered by a provider who caps their data, meaning that they're only allowed to use a certain amount of data per month, CPUC does not consider that to be a covered area, because that limits the ability, the ability of the user to consume the internet. They view that as a, as a, being in a different category. You know, for instance, the satellite providers, they, the satellite providers are not considered to be a served provider. In fact, the sat, areas that are provided, covered by satellite only are classified by the CPUC as being unserved areas. So a residence there may have a connection, they may be able to do certain things on the internet, but even though they have a provider, that doesn't necessarily mean the CPUC would classify them as being covered.
Okay.
And I want to go on to say that the other reason that's important is because of the way our internet usage is evolving, that some people who may currently only be using the internet for basic web surfing and email, as their usage evolves and they start becoming interested in streaming video, et cetera, the, the amount of bandwidth or the, the strength of their connection is going to increase. And so what we're trying to do and what the CPUC is trying to do is to get them to a level that will accommodate that increased usage.
All right, so taking that kind of example, I mean, my husband and I used it for email and web surfing, and now with four teenagers, we're getting all sorts of downstreaming and that kind of thing. So as I look at, okay, my gosh, I need bigger, faster, better, whatever, it's this kind of program that's going to strengthen and bring in broadband for those kinds of uses?
Yes, yeah. And specifically to our area where, where funding projects like this are, are difficult, it's the, having the benefit of that, that matching fund or that extra incentive to do infrastructure build-out. Again, I want to be clear, we've got terrific Internet Service Providers that are already adding coverage on a daily basis and financing it on their own, because they're not interested in, in jumping through the hoops that are required for the CASF funding. But I love what you said, bigger, bigger, better, faster. I think I'm going to get that put on my card, because that's kind of, that kind of says it all. That's, we need bigger, better, faster.
That's what my kids tell me, we need bigger, better, faster.
That's right. We need, we need more pipelines.
Okay, so, so with that then, when we take a look at this particular grant application, who ultimately approves it? Where does it go this next step?
The CPUC.
Oh, right. And that's it?
Mm-hmm.
And then it comes back to this board for acceptance of the grant or?
No. You don't have anything to do other than granting, hopefully granting the resolution. And I also want to add that you also have no, no, the funding, the county doesn't, is not responsible for any of the funding for this project.
All right.
So alls we're asking you to do is to support the application and by saying, yes, we need more broadband coverage in our county, and then we'll let the CPUC do their work as in determining how the cal.net application stacks up against the numerous other applications, because there are, there are 16 consortia like Central Sierra Connect around the state and it's a very competitive process.
I was imagining competitive. And through your process then of gathering supports, are you providing outreach to like the chambers and the EDCs of the two counties and other kinds of interest groups or?
Yes, all counties. And typically what I do is I start with the Board of Supervisors. And for instance, in Tuolumne County, we gain the support of the Board of Supervisors and then the TCEDA came thereafter and then the chamber, and then I reach out to individual businesses to get their support too, because broadband impacts everyone.
Right.
So when Nikki was here earlier, when we talk about telehealth and telemedicine, it's absolutely critical for our particular area. So I go right down the list of the entities, what we call the anchor tenants in our region that understand the need for additional broadband.
Well, that's what I hear most about in regards to EDC and trying to grow business in Calaveras County as internet is, you know, almost more important than water.
It's a huge component, but you can also talk to the realtors.
Yeah.
Who, whenever they get someone who comes in and looks at a property, the first question they ask is about broadband availability.
Right. All right, thank you.
Mr. Slocombe, I haven't heard the word Comcast.
Mm-hmm.
I live up in District 3, up in Lake Springs, and we have Comcast as an Internet Service Provider up there. Are they involved in a program that you're offering funding for like CalNet? I mean, are we talking apples and apples here or apples and oranges?
Boy, I don't even think apples and oranges cover it.
Example, Comcast provides, they're an ISP up there, they're a big conglomerate.
Right.
And they have coverage up in there.
Yeah.
Is that a company that would participate in your program?
No, Comcast is a fairly well-funded company.
Okay.
On their own, yeah. And by the way, this, this application does not compete with Comcast and CPUC is very much familiar with Comcast in the areas that they cover.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Want to clarify that.
Yeah, thanks.
What about the smaller providers though? What will happen to them should this project go forward?
Well, specific to the application, I can tell you that, again, if a, if a small provider, and Ken kind of went over this, if they have a particular area covered and it meets the CPUC definition, then that area will not be eligible for funding. So for instance, in Amador County, on our first pass, we put through the area that we had described, it turned out that Volcano, so far as I'm right, mention Volcano, they had just added coverage to a particular area. So CalNet amended their application to remove that area, because now it was showing as being covered. So there's a mechanism in place to protect the existing providers who are already meeting the, the minimum requirements. If they're not in that area, then it becomes a condition, it becomes a situation of competitive market, where now we need, and we need to encourage investment and competitors to come in and fill the gaps that we have in our area.
So we have, obviously our agenda loads noon Friday and after that, there was a couple of urgent.
And after that, there was a couple of urgent emails and also a phone call that I got about this item. You know, if I were to go back and tell them that by approving this, they will still be able to do their business going forward in the areas that they established. Some of these people have made small investments, not small, large investments in their personal funds to get like a tower going, and they provide internet to people. Are they still going to be able to do that? And you're telling me, yes, they are?
Well, no, I'm not necessarily telling you that, and I don't, I don't know if I would feel comfortable in your place to tell them that they can continue. But, we're not, we're not in the, are you advocating that you protect a particular market?
No, I'm advocating that this came on so quick to them, they're not here to talk today about this. And that concerns me, that we passed this without giving the full opportunity of, so that could basically devastate a small business person.
Yeah, I understand. Well, they would certainly have the opportunity to register their concerns or contest the application to the CPUC, who would have the ultimate authority to do that.
Thank you.
So, I, again, I don't know if this would help, but the parallel is that when Comcast came into Topeka County and they announced that they wanted to do an overbuild of their existing system, you're probably aware of the fact that Comcast bought a small, relatively small cable company over in Topeka County, and they were operating off of copper network. And there was some lobbying to try to get them to come in and put in a full network like they have here in Calaveras County, high definition. And there were protests by some of the area internet service providers. But what the board ultimately determined is that they couldn't pass on an opportunity for that kind of added investment in infrastructure in their particular area. So, take that for what you will.
So, going forward with Volcano especially up there, I recognize that they haven't objected. I don't know if they have actively supported, but I didn't see that they didn't object in Amador County. I don't know if they signed on in support of this application?
They didn't sign on in support, but their representative came to the Board of Supervisors meeting where we offered, asked for the resolution, and he offered no objections.
And so, like if, and my main concern is really to make sure that my district and whole county has, you know, access to the latest technology, so we, you know, that's not a barrier to our economic growth. And so, with Volcano, this other company, El Dorado, would they work, you know, how do they work together? Or do they just compete? Is that what you're saying, it's a competition going forward? Or do they share some of the resources? I mean, how does that work?
Well, it's a combination of the two. They are, they can certainly be competitors, and they will be in certain markets. But Cal.net already co-locates on at least one tower in Amador County with Volcano. So, there is an opportunity to be friendly competitors versus divisive entities. So, there's, and we hope there'll be more of that, because co-location is obviously very critical to adding to our infrastructure, because we can only put up so many new towers.
And I know that in other previous topics, you know, especially when there's a grant involved, even though we're not going to be financially liable for this, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, making sure we read every last sentence in those grant applications, and yet, there's no grant application attached to this staff report. So, was that, can we see that grant proposal?
Could you see the grant proposal?
Yeah, because you're asking us to support a grant project without having an actual proposal in front of us, so you can't be able to look at it.
Well, I guess that would be up to Cal.net, if they wanted to share their application with you.
So, the grant, yeah, the grant proposal goes before the California Public Utilities Commission. We've never had this request before. We'd have to take it into consideration. It's a, there's a lot of private financial data in the proposal, and it's actually not currently complete. We're in the process of completing it. We'll be submitting it this month. And so, even if, you know, if we had it, we wouldn't have had it available for you today at any rate. But as far as, you know, actually having you see the grant proposal, the summary of the grant proposal is public record. It's part of the submission process, the Public Utilities Commission. You have to produce a summary that describes who you're going to serve, where you're going to serve, how much money you're asking for, and a few other details. As far as getting down into the weeds and, you know, financials for the company, the timetable of when things will get built and so forth and so on, that all has to be vetted out by the CPUC and their internal staff before any final conclusion is made. And in that process, things will change in terms of, most likely. I mean, they'll come back with recommendations to tweak this or change that. So, you know, see the, the public portion, which is the summary.
That would be good. And thanks for fixing the math there, because that's what I was expecting.
Yeah, I just have to get on the Wi-Fi to figure that out.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Bill, say.
I have a question for CalNet. There are referenced in our board package, white television transmission.
Television white space.
Explain that, if you please.
Yes, so TV white space. Several years ago, the whole country, and in fact, the whole world, transitioned from analog television to digital television. When that occurred, it opened up the frequency bands that the old TV channels used to use. And FCC was mandated to figure out what to do with that now fallow frequency. And so, FCC and academia and industry came together and decided the best use of that frequency was for bidirectional broadband communications. Now, TV, television frequencies are very low frequencies compared to, say, Wi-Fi or cell phones. And they have propagation characteristics, just like when you had your old TV antenna on the house. It didn't matter if you were buried in the woods, you could still get a TV signal at your house. And that's because the frequencies are rather low in comparison to Wi-Fi, for example. With Wi-Fi, if a tree is in the way, a branch of a tree is in the way, it degrades the signal so much that you can't get out of the service. Because of the low frequencies of television, or the television bands, UHF and VHF, you can get these broadband signals great distances through forests, around hills, that sort of thing. And so, the technology was born just recently, within the last couple of years. The first product certified by the FCC for TV white space was just certified at the end of 2013, in December 2013. So, it's a very new technology, and it's being used, starting to be used in greater amounts nationwide and worldwide. In fact, there are places in Africa and Asia that are using it even more than we are in the United States right now. And that's partly because their regulatory agencies approved it more quickly than our FCC. And in fact, just last week, a regulatory agency in Canada approved it for the first time, used in Canada. So, it's that new, but the technology is so, the abilities of that technology make it so profound that internet service providers like us believe it to be one of the best solutions available to get to communities like yours and like ours in El Dorado County, that here at DeFlora could never get broadband because of where people happen to live. And so, we plan to use that. And that's not the only technology we'll be using. We'll also be using LTE, LTE that you know on your cell phones, for example. This is a different LTE technology in that it's tailored specifically for fixed user devices as opposed to mobile user devices. So, it's still LTE, but it's enhanced to be used for subscriber devices that are attached to a building.
So, if you're looking at, say, 10 years from now, get approved for this funding, how much of Calaveras are you looking to cover within a time period?
Well, we're looking to cover the part here through the grant, which is defined to be unserved or underserved. Now, once we've done that, this is a two-year construction period. We have to complete this area, the whole area that we propose, if approved by the CPUC, within two years.
Wow.
That's part of the requirement.
Do they all have basic coverage?
They will all have, they will all have, if they define as served, coverage meaning six megabits or better. The technology that we're proposing to use, the TV white space, that'll give us up to 10 megabits now, is because it's new technology, any new technology improves as time goes on. You'll have that technology at higher and higher speeds. The LTE that we're planning to use will have speeds available of 25 megabits. But you ask, what are we doing out to 10 years? Well, it's kind of hard to see 10 years in the future.
Yeah.
We do plan to offer our services in other areas that are considered served today, where we think we can provide better service than the incumbents. And so, our first requirement is to build out the funded areas shown here on the map within two years. Once we've done that, then we can concentrate on areas outside of those colors, like downtown San Andreas, for example, or Angels Camp, that have service, but their service could be better.
That's an understatement.
And that's another benefit of competition, is to have more than one choice. One of the criticisms of broadband, not just in rural areas, but in the US, is a limited number of providers.
One more question technical, for the sake of being a little educated now. How does a white television system compare to T1, T2 lines?
A T1 line is one and a half megabits. So, a T1 line, you can surf the internet, you can get email, you can't really stream any movies. Six megabits is about the minimum for streaming a high-definition movie through Netflix, for example. TV white space will give us six to 10 megabits of service wherever we deploy it for the end user, using the next-generation product that's coming out right now.
It's my understanding that large corporations, when they go into an area, they utilize their own IT systems. How does that compare to what you're proposing, your technology?
Well, it's essentially the same, except for scale, right? Comcast is huge, they're nationwide. We're based in El Dorado County, and we serve El Dorado County, and we're moving southward. We'll be moving southward whether we get the grant or not. The grant will just accelerate how quickly we move. But we do have our own IT facility. We built a brand-new facility just two years ago. Its facility has redundant connections to the internet with separate gigabit fiber connections from different locations and different providers. It has a data center with redundant air conditioning systems, redundant power supplies, generators. It is a full, complete IT internet provider data center, just like AT&amp;T and Comcast have, except for smaller.
When you mention large, when you mention large.
CalNet.
How's our track record?
Yeah, how you doing developing?
We're moving as fast as we can, and we're expanding all the time. We started this in 2006 with our first wireless, and just around Shingle Springs and Rescue. And now we cover almost all the western part of El Dorado County and a little bit of northern, northwestern Amador County. And we build several towers a year on our own.
Will you be tapping into CPI and?
Yes, we will. It is part of the grant proposal that we utilize them, and we're using them for two purposes. One is for another connection to the band, to the internet. The second is for another redundancy capability, so that we can ensure that people always maintain connectivity. We have our facility in Shingle Springs. If, in rarest of possibilities, something goes down on a connection between here and Shingle Springs, we'll have a connection with CBIN in Calaveras County, and Topeka County, and Amador County, all down the line, so that there's a failover in case something breaks.
So, will you be offering that service to the providers if they?
We actually can, and we actually do. We do offer a dedicated high-speed connection to one of our competitors in El Dorado County right now, because they have no other way to get the connection to the internet. And so, we're open to that, yes.
The local providers would have the ability, will have the ability to go directly to CBIN. We've gotten quite technical today, and more so than we normally do, but I want to ask Ken to explain one more thing, which is the difference between licensed and unlicensed spectrum.
Certainly. So, licensed spectrum is, well, it's licensed by the FCC, meaning only a specific provider can use it in a specific location. But there's different kinds of licenses. There's wide-area licenses like the cell phone providers use. That means they have a geographic area that are licensed only to them on a specific frequency. And you have AT&amp;T, and you have Verizon, and you have T-Mobile, and they're all in the same area, but they are licensed different frequency bands, so that they can all cover the same area. And then there are point-to-point licenses. Those are licenses that are available to any entity for a very narrow communication beam between two points, that talk only between those two points. And those are used for your high-capacity links between facilities. High capacity between one tower and another tower, high capacity between a tower and an internet connection. And for us, we don't have $17 billion to bid on the next wide-area license. Like, the AWS license that was just awarded by the FCC last week brought in $25 billion to the federal coffers. But we do have the money for licensed point-to-point links, and those are relatively inexpensive. And we use those all the time for our backhaul between tower sites, and ultimately, connection to our data center and the internet.
And it creates a more secure and less congested?
Yes, it's secure because nobody else can use it, and it's not congested because nobody else can use it.
So, that's that traffic, where you have traffic delays periodically because of overused, particularly overused band?
Yeah. Yeah, the problem with non-licensed or license-exempt frequencies, which we use for our point-to-multi-point, we have a tower site, and we have what's called an access point that serves dozens of customers. We, as Cal.net and every other wireless internet service provider in the industry, uses what's called license-exempt frequencies to do that. The problem with license-exempt is that if there are multiple providers in an area, they're all using the same frequency, and that becomes congested, and there's interference between the two. Now, we also use a different frequency band, which is, it's not fully licensed, it's called lightly licensed. You have to jump through some hoops with the FCC, you have to get some permissions from other operators such as earth stations, and there's an earth station in Tracy that has one of these 40-foot antennas that points up in the sky to talk to the satellite. They use the same frequency bands that those facilities use. You have to get permission from them if you're close enough to them to use those frequency bands. We've jumped through those hoops to get those permissions from the FCC and from these operators to use these frequency bands in this area. And so, for all intents and purposes, we are using a wide-area licensed frequency for point-to-multi-point, but it's not the same kind, it's kind of a shared permission-based license as opposed to owned license that nobody else can use.
Yeah, they do have a lot of ways to make money, huh?
That's true.
All right, so, any other questions from the board about public?
Thank you.
I'd like to make my quick remark. Ladies and gentlemen, I had occasion to go up to Pine Grove, I had to play bodyguard, nice neighborhood. But, real estate person, we have a hotspot, AT&amp;T. We were able to go between, because those trees are a little bit bigger, go between the trees, hotspot, got Wi-Fi, pictures and so on. Now, I'm sure your ideas are fantastic, sir. And I'm sure there's a great demand for it. Does anybody take a look how many of those people has the equipment to take advantage of the service? Because I haven't heard anybody, how many people have high-speed computers, whatever else, three above my pay grade, understood, Tommy. The equipment to take advantage of the service you provide. How many of those folks up there have those?
So, the equipment to utilize the service is provided by us.
Provided by you?
We provide the equipment. The equipment is mounted on the outside of your house, typically.
No, I'm talking about a computer or whatever.
Now, we don't provide computers, we don't provide.
You provide the antenna.
We provide the antenna.
A receiver.
A receiver, yes.
Something like Hughes does, from the sky?
Something like that.
Okay.
It's a small box like this.
A small box, yes, yes. Well, I got DirecTV, small size, they provide high-speed internet and so on. Caltel give me high-speed internet, pretty damn good, five gigabytes, I always use it up, but it does stop. But the point I'm trying to make, sir, if there's such a demand for it, why the grant? Somebody's paid for the grant, sir. I mean, it's nice for you to, or whoever organization will receive the grant, okay? Me as a sucker who end up paying for a grant, doesn't really bother me.
Peter, can you address the board, please?
Yes, sir. Me the sucker who's going to be responsible for the grant, doesn't bother me, but my kids and grandkids are going to pay for those grants, does. Is there a demand for it? You wouldn't need no grants. AT&amp;T doesn't get a grant to give me my high-speed internet hotspot. I'm paying it, and I can tell them to stick it whenever I want to, okay? But when you, if there's no demand for it, why the grant? You want a supply and demand. If there's a demand for it, fine, somebody's going to take the money and invest in it. You can put all the supply you want, and you know your district better than I do. If there's no demand, why would a stack player get stuck with it to put out a supply that is not demanded? Thank you.
Marty Crane, I'd just like to say that one of the first things on the Economic Development Council that we identified was a serious need for broadband throughout the county. If you happen to have internet access, then you probably don't really realize what it's like to click, go wash the dishes, and come back, and, oh, you're not done yet? You know, that's how slow the dial-up is, and we all, well, maybe we don't all realize that, because if you have access, you don't know what you're missing. Anyway, I'd like to say thank you to Darrell Slocum for, and for this gentleman, what is your name, I'm sorry?
Ted Gardner.
From CalNet for digging a little deeper today and sharing all this information and educating everyone on this really, really important issue here. And thank you to CalNet for stepping up to be able, first of all, to be able to step up and apply for this funding. And what I'm hearing is that there are opportunities through CalNet and Central Sierra Connect to partner with the smaller ISPs in some way, because maybe, like was mentioned before, they can afford to jump through all the hoops, but working together, they can benefit as well, and then we all benefit through the connections. So, I'm very excited about this. We've been talking about it for years. And to address the issue of where is the demand, why would you supply this if there's no demand? Well, I for one, if I didn't have any connection, I wouldn't buy a computer. But once I had it, I'd be looking at it. So, I'm very excited. This is, if you want to talk about our, this sustainable economic future for Calaveras County, we have to have broadband. There, we got water too, but I mean, we've got to have broadband. So, anyway, thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen, the board, my name is David Harris with Conifer Communications, based out of Tualamie County. I'm getting at the extent of my knowledge of area when looking at Calaveras, but I do know of a couple providers in the area that are planning to do major expansion in the next few months. So, I caution this board to think about what they would do in helping promote government assistance to a private party which would squash a private party. I have heard and listened well, and I heard tones of, and one of them was directed at a question of District Three Supervisor Steve Kearney. So, you're advocating protecting those people? Well, I would say I would want to be cautious about asking for government money to help a private industry that would squash a smaller entity. I don't know about the data of Calaveras, like I said, I'm at the extent of my knowledge. But I do know last week, CalNet and Mr. Slocum appeared before Tualamie County Supervisors, and they approved. And the data, the towns they listed as underserved and not served, was very, very flawed. They listed Big Oak Flat, Groveland, Pine Mountain Lake as underserved and not served. And we can hit almost 95% of those people, if not more, with 10 makes, anytime they want to ask for it. Anytime. Our base package of three up, three down, 4995. So, please be careful about rubber stamping something where a private company's going to go against some other private companies that I know are looking to expand in the area that are already here. So, if you have any questions, I'd like to, I'd be glad to fill in.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Listening to this whole conversation this morning, and the questions that are being asked by members of the board, and the latest of some of the information that Supervisor Kearney was talking about, I would like to suggest that maybe this be held over and more information gained before you make a decision.
Good morning, Calaveras County Republicans. I just want to weigh in again, because when I sit out here, I think of principle first and making those decisions. And hearing from this gentleman that just got up that owns one of the businesses, I think he made a very good point. When we look at principle, that free markets should be what we, well, it is what we believe in, and it does make it difficult when someone is getting funded through the government. So, just, I think, to keep that in mind, I think what he had to say was right on about free markets. It is disturbing that we don't have broadband here in Calaveras County, and I always wonder why. Why doesn't the free market come in here? So, there is something wrong. I don't understand what it is, and at least somebody's coming to try to help us. But whether we do that through government grants is an issue, you know, that we need to talk about. And I probably agree that maybe tabling this and doing some more discussion. I think in this, in these times, we're so suspicious, and we seem to get caught in something and then go back and go, oh, my God, what did we just do? So, I don't know. You guys know more about what you want to make a decision about, but keep those things in mind. Thanks.
Anybody else? Any comments from the board? Anymore?
I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, this is a very new field to me, learning an awful lot, and I certainly appreciate the presentation and information today. I, my gut right now is to ask that we postpone this for, to our next meeting, only because I have a slurry of emails that I received from folks that I admire and respect as business leaders here in Calaveras County, and they did not have an opportunity to be here today for a number of different reasons. And I would like to hear specifically from them about this proposal. I don't want to base my decision on a lot of email flurry in regards to who said or didn't do, or what we're doing, or duplicating, or not duplicating, and so on and so forth. And would like a little bit clearer information on this subject. I find that oftentimes, there's a lot of misinformation which scares people and makes people go in a lot of different directions. So, in fairness to this program and this proposal, I would like to hear from some of the local providers and business leaders that we have here in the county to see if we can gain support and all move forward in being able to support this particular grant application. I understand maybe coming before the board and going to other business leaders later, asking for support might be a way to go. But I, as a board member, would like to see the community leaders and business leaders behind this project and being able to endorse it in its entirety in moving forward. So, I would ask that we hold over this for our second meeting in February to allow some business leaders to come forward and share additional information on this project and hopefully be supportive overall, so we can all be winners.
I want to thank Debbie for taking the words out of my mouth, and, you know. Pardon me?
Can I add any more words?
Well, but I don't disagree with any of them. I appreciate what you're trying to do. It is an infrastructure that needs to be improved in the county. I give you all of that. But also, I mean, I'm of a mindset to improve our business climate in this county, and that's very important to me. And I don't think we do that by taking some of the business people who have worked hard to get something going in their field and making it more difficult for them going forward, without at least giving them the chance to tell us their story. So, you know, I know it's tough to get back, and I sure hope you can come in a couple weeks if the board decides to do that, but I chime in with my counterpart here.
Mr. Chair, I would concur with that position. I'd add more words.
So, I feel about the same way about it, being a small business owner myself here. If I had a competitor that were going to get grant-funded and go against, or, you know, compete against me as a grant-funded operation, then that would leave me with little, little power, actually, to make my business move forward. So, still want to learn more about it myself. This is a big subject, you know. I'm not a techie, I got to tell you. And I have just been, started receiving emails about two days ago on this subject. And there's a couple of them that have concerns, and there was a couple of them that also supported it. So, I feel that if we could hold it over for the next available meeting, then I don't know when the grant application is due, but, you know, and I know this is just a resolution, but before we, it sounds to me like the board agrees, before we agree on a resolution in favor of something, we need to know a little bit more about it, and we want to hear from our local providers. So, I feel that's what we should do, too.
Would you like me to move that it be carried over to?
Do we have to? No.
No, you can just direct staff to continue it to the next board meeting.
Thank you for your presentation on it. It, you know, really opened my eyes to a lot of things I didn't know, like white, white TV.
TV white space.
Yeah, that's pretty interesting stuff, and, you know, great possibilities. There's no doubt that our county definitely needs the services. And I know that our, you know, because I've worked with Darrell with the EDC group, and I know that, you know, we're hurt in the county, but we also want to make sure that we move forward in a fair way for the businesses that are here as well. So, grant-funded operation, it just kind of takes the fairness out of it in a lot of cases, unless there's, you know, ways to be able to help everybody, so.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to seeing you again in a couple weeks.
All right, great. Thank you.
I do have one question for Mr. Slocum. Is there any way you could advise the board clerk of any other ISP providers that are applying for this application, similar application?
I can't because there are none. And again, to reiterate, anyone who wants to can do it.
Okay.
So, they're just choosing not to do that.
All right. Wasn't able to.
Not able to. But I can tell you that the grant funding is made available because the return on investment to build out a network is not significant enough to encourage that investment that we're all looking for, and that's specifically what the grant is provided for. If I could add one more thing, when I go to Sacramento to the hearings pertaining to the infrastructure, the large providers always appear before those hearings, and they discourage infrastructure investment because they say, why are you doing that? We've got it all covered now. So, there is, the odds are stacked against us. But thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies.
All right. So, we're going to have another five-minute break or so. Public works, got a couple more time to set up, or planning, I'm sorry. All right. All right, call the meeting back to order. So, we have agenda item number 11, planning. This update on localized effort is merely informational, and the effort to keep the board updated on progress that has been made by the Colomy Collaborative Group. There's no action recommended by the staff and board to take it this time. However, in conclusion of the presentation and discussion, a task identified, the board can take action and direct staff to proceed with that task. Thank you.
Good morning, Dorsey Kalar and Peter Mauer with the Planning Department. Today, as you just said, this is just an update on this process that we have been involved in, actually, we'll state back to 2003, but the Planning Department's involvement since late summer of 2013. In approximately November 2004, the state looked into doing what is known as an integrated regional water management planning program. So, the purpose of that was really to involve into major water resources planning framework that could be used on a regional level. So, what the state encourages is this collaborative level between various state entities, local waterproof purveyors, non-governmental organizations, and it's an effort to work collaboratively on water issues that may be affecting that particular region. So, in this case, when this was brought about by the state, it is to promote a new model for water management. The program itself is funded by three different particular funding mechanisms, and there are grants available through these particular ones. So, the first one being Proposition 50 in 2003 offered up $500 million in potential grant funding. Proposition 84 in 2006 was $1 billion, and then Proposition 100 in 2006 is $300 million. So, there's two entities that sort of oversee this process, one being what we call the MAC region, which is McColty, Amador, and Calaveras. MAC region, which is McAlumee, Amador, and Calaveras, and different entities from those regions. And then the eastern San Joaquin region, which involves several entities from San Joaquin area. So what?
Back to the?
Yep.
Sorry. So can you explain the, the part of Calaveras that is not part of those two planning areas?
Yeah, that's in a different watershed. So this is involved with the McAlumee watershed.
Right. So that, so the Angels Camp and all that area.
Correct. That's a different watershed.
So there's a planning group associated with that part of Calaveras?
At this time, there is not one that I'm aware of that's doing an effort like this. So Milkwise, as we refer to it, actually stands for the McAlumee Watershed Interregional Sustainability Evaluation Program. So we're seeking to improve water resource management. What it has done is it's brought together various stakeholders, which you'll see a list of those on the next slide coming up, to encourage this cooperative effort for water resources management. Some of the things that we've done is identify collaborative projects that we can work together on that benefit, you know, both regions. And hopefully this will be a guide for future management of these resources and maybe a tool that other entities can utilize. So as I said, it, it's been envisioned as sort of Milkwise since about 2003. And the first region that, that basically did this was Sacramento. It was the Sacramento Water Forum. And so what this slide kind of shows you is, is what they went through in this process, which was similar. It took them about six years. They addressed various issues, surface water, supply-demand, how to sustain existing fish populations on the American River. And they also looked at upper and lower river aspects. Ultimately, they had a portfolio and they did a water forum agreement, which was adopted by that particular forum, which ultimately then those stakeholders that were involved issued resolutions of support for that particular document. So when the, the McAlumee River Forum was brought together in 2003, they met through facilitated discussions through about 2012. And some of the, there was four key outcomes from that. And one of that was having upper and lower McAlumee watershed stakeholders became better acquainted with one another, you know, what their struggles are individually and as a group, and how they could come together to help each other. They identified a conjunctive use concept. There was a subcommittee formed from those stakeholders, which prepared the grant application. The application was submitted to the state, and $878,000 grant was awarded for this particular effort. So what was done next, and as you'll see on the screen before you, these are the various organizations that are participating in the Milkwise process. But what happened in between the issuance of the grant and when we first started meeting was hiring a consultant to do the work, coming up with a list of stakeholders, interested parties, coming up with a facilitator who oversees the entire process and the meetings that we have. They reached out to all of these entities, plus a lot more, and asked them, are you willing to be a stakeholder? Would you just like to be an interested party that's kept in the loop on what we're doing? So what resulted in is about 24 different member organizations that you can see on the screen before you. And we all come together on a monthly basis, and we have various tasks from the grant that we have to discuss and get through and come up with basically an end document. So in the beginning, we came up with various different protocols. And one of the things that we came up with was, what is the program purpose? So what's the purpose of the Milkwise program? So what we came up with was to develop a broadly-supported preferred water resources program that meets both regions' needs, as well as the needs of regional stakeholders and interested groups. We have various objectives that we want to meet through this. So one of them is to identify and evaluate project concepts. So what are project concepts? What those basically are is each entity has come up with, you know, it could be one, it could be five, different potential projects that would be included in this final document. And it may be that it restores fish populations. It could be a conjunctive use project. It could be restoration of particular meadows. So they vary across the board of what those particular concepts could potentially be. The next step, which is kind of where we're at right now in the group, is identifying a preferred portfolio where these particular projects go into. So we could have 50 projects. Not all of them would go into that final preferred portfolio. So what the group is dealing with right now is coming up with what is that preferred portfolio? So what project should be included in that final product? The next steps that we'll be doing in a few more months also is to develop a bi-regional plan to actually implement that preferred portfolio. So not just having a document that we can all look at, but actually, how do we implement those concepts that are in there? And then, as I said earlier, to hopefully serve as a model for, for other interregional programs. We have a list of consequences that we want to be avoided. It's, it's a pretty lengthy list. So what I'm including is just sort of the highlights to capture pretty much all the different groups. So the first one is to definitely avoid basing any decisions on incomplete or inaccurate information. So ensuring that our models are correct, they're accurate in terms of the information we have, that must be up to date. Avoiding any demand for new or larger on-stream dams. Avoiding the conversion of agricultural lands to developed areas. Avoiding any harmful impacts to fisheries and other wildlife. We don't want to shift any of the existing environmental impacts that may be out there from one area to the other. We want to avoid any sort of dependency on potentially unreliable water supplies. We want to avoid violating any procedural or substantive laws. And we want to make sure that we have interregional inequality, so that there's a balance in that finer portfolio that benefits not just the upper McAlumee, but as well as the lower McAlumee watershed. Some of the potential benefits of the program that we're looking at is drought protection, water quality protection and enhancement, groundwater replenishment, maintain and improve environmental and natural resource conditions, long-term balance of water supply and demand, and a resolution of longstanding regional and interregional conflicts that may be out there. So this is a 22-month period. We did begin late summer of 2013. Right now, we're, we're in the process of assessing the concepts and grouping them together to put them in a portfolio. So we're still in the middle of the one, two, three, working on various concepts, how to fit them in, what would be the ultimate best portfolio that would take advantage of grant funding to do these projects. This is just a schedule of all the different tasks. Some of them do overlap. The goal as part of our grant is we have to be concluded by June of 2015. So we have about five more months and a lot of work to do. There are some challenges with this process. And as you probably can guess, one of the main challenges is coming up with a preferred alternative or preferred portfolio that has a diverse set of project concepts in there, and also that all the stakeholder organizations can basically live with. So really trying to find that balance of serving the needs of the upper and the lower watershed, and having a portfolio that would be able to get us some grant funding in the future to be able to do potential projects. And then the other challenge that we face that we'll be struggling with here in the next few months is actually an implementation plan. So you have a portfolio, and then what you do with it. So you need to come up with a way to implement those concepts. Those lead agencies that have taken responsibility will need to, you know, make sure that they're applying for the grants, that they're administering their grants if they are rewarded, and that there is still this interregional aspect that's involved. So the Milkwise group, we meet once a month on the second Friday of every month. Some of the board members have been able to attend meetings in the past. Hopefully, they've been informational and beneficial. So for our meeting that we have upcoming this Friday, all this information on the next slide you'll see is a website where you can go to to get a lot more information of documents that we, as a group, have prepared and approved. But for our upcoming meeting, because we're going to be resolving some concerns with some of the project concepts and the descriptions of what they are, and how they actually would proceed forward. We also need to agree on those concepts that are going to go into a portfolio. And then we're going to be discussing the methodology to move forward with those. So there is a, it is a public meeting. There is a public comment period during these meetings. Agendas are posted online. So I would encourage anyone that wants more information about the process, if you can't get it online, you can attend the meetings. You can contact myself or Peter for additional information as well. This is the website. It's called Milkwise.org. And under the Documents tab, you will see meeting summaries, agendas, the water availability analysis document that we just recently, as a group, after several iterations, approved to move forward on. So it does provide a lot of great information and background. That's the conclusion of staff's update. As I said, there is no action, but if there is something that the board identifies as a task and they'd like us to do, certainly direct us to do so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. So I had, I was at the last, we had a breakout, you know, we're doing session on what portfolios would look like. And I, I walked away from there pretty discouraged, actually, because it seemed like, to me, and I could be wrong, I'd probably have to have somebody explain it to me very thoroughly, that everything that was suggested was sending that water straight down to East Bay Mud without considering our counts. So I kind of have an issue with that, you know, because there, it says in here it's supposed to be balanced, but I don't see the balance. So I'm, I'm kind of curious about some of that. And, you know, there are some, some parts, like for instance, in here it said dependency on potentially unreliable supply. We really have that. But, but, you know, what's being done, what can, what can they do to help that? We have CPUD right now that's been put on notice that they have to basically not add any new connections until they can prove that they have an adequate supply of water, if I'm stating that correctly. And so, what? So, so, you know, I think, you know, that's kind of an important, you can't hear? Is that what it is? All right. So, you know, tho, those types of thi, and then, you know, harmful impacts of fisheries and other wildlife. Well, you know, that's true. And those are some of the things that we need to, to consider, especially for the ecosystem. But introducing new species and things like that into the mix doesn't seem to help, help that issue. Demand for new and larger on-stream dams. You know, I think there's other ways, you know, we're exploring actually, to do it without dams. But I was there when they, when they asked, when Amador asked for a feasibility study, just a feasibility study, to see if it was feasible to raise lower water. And it was thrown out. It wasn't even considered. So, you know, I, I mean, it's just a feasibility study. So there are, you know, I, I know our situation here in the county, or most of it, or some of it, as far as water goes. I don't pretend to know what Amador is going through. I know that they're very limited, even more so than us. And, and it all flows downhill to, to East Bay Mud. And then, one of the projects, if I can, if I remember right, was a groundwater water recharge in San Joaquin County. All right?
Let's start off with this.
So I'd be interested in groundwater recharge here in Calaveras County. You know? But that wasn't present. So, I, you know, I don't, I guess I, maybe I just need to know more about it to, to not be so negative about it. But it seems to me like it's more, it's not, it needs to help us.
I'd like to respond to that a little bit, because, you know, I sort of feel the same frustration in a way. And I think the, the history of water policy and politics in this state is always, you know, the, the big guys get what they want and the rest of us forget that, you know, pie in dry, more, you know, figuratively as well as literally. And I think that the concept here of looking at watershed as a whole and trying to bring all the parties together is a novel approach and worthwhile, you know, as far as the effort. The outcome is still unknown at this point. And typically, it's everyone, every man for himself, or every district for themselves. When we're going to get the water, we don't, you know, someone else will take an argument, we're going to sue you. And that's been the approach over the last, you know, century and a half. And, you know, this is an attempt to get beyond this. There, there is money that has already been allocated, you know, by the, the voters of the state to fund certain projects in the future, you know, the seven and a half billion from Prop 1. And, you know, to be in a position where we can, you know, leverage a cooperative effort, bringing in all the various, you know, opposing players to a, a program, a portfolio of projects that might be successful in, in improving the water quantity and quality and management in our region that, that benefits everyone is, is the ideal that we're shooting for. As Darcy pointed out, there's a lot of work to do. And if you observe, you know, everyone's still sort of jockeying for position to, to what's going to benefit their, their priority. And so I'm, I'm hopeful, although not overly optimistic, that this can, you know, move forward to a point where we do have some agreement. And it's not just all East Bay Mud, they get the water, and we, you know, we get what's left. Because they are the big grill in the room. Everyone in this town, and we sort of know that, that's part of what we're dealing with. But there's a lot of other smaller districts. There is environmental interests, the community interest out there that are at the table at least, which is something that have, we haven't had in the past.
So I just have a question on the projects that are going to be moving forward with, with this overall program. And one of the things, at some point, we discussed with CPUD, was that pipeline, basically putting a pipeline where their old ditch was to connect sheds back into their system. Now, is that, is that part of the, any of these portfolios?
That is one of them.
That is one of them, yes. It's, it's a concept that's still on the table. But we haven't finalized that portfolio. That's what we're going to be working on this week. So it's still a project concept.
Right.
That's a potential.
So that would be good for, you know, for Calaveras County specifically. I mean, is there other, are there other ones like that, that you can say, this is what, you know, we, because we're Calaveras County Board Supervisors, you know, most interested in, in what, what, what do we get out of the process? So there's one. Are there other ones that?
There's a few others that are sponsored. There aren't any county-sponsored concepts themselves. We did submit a few of them that actually, like CPUD became the sponsor of a potentially changing over the Barney Way properties from a septic to a public infrastructure. That one, CPUD, sponsored, it's still on the table. We discussed, I think we had one that was very specific about water conservation, which now became more regional. Everybody understands they need to do water conservation, zero landscaping, drought tolerant, education type, type of a program. So that one started with us as being the concept sponsor, and now it became a more regional that everybody, you know, says it's a good.
So we'll get funding for concentration?
Well, it's, it's potential if, if it becomes, something that goes into that portfolio, then we have the ability to apply for that seven and a half, some of that money, to implement some sort of a program. So the ability is there.
Other, other programs? Other, other programs?
There aren't other programs that we as a county would take the lead on, but there are.
But I mean, that happen within, that benefit the boundaries?
Yes. So CCWD has a few, and CPUD has a few. So there's the potential there, that if their projects get in that portfolio, that as a county, we may want to help support through the grant process to help them get that grant, and for, you know, if it's upgrading of their treatment plans or additional infrastructure. So.
It helps our constituents.
It helps our constituents in the long run. So there's a lot of potential there for us to be, not necessarily a pro-grantor, but just to have that additional support for them when they do their grant application.
And how long are we along, far along are we in the process? I mean, I guess Cliff taking the lead is developing a, a large watershed program for the county. Is there possibility of getting something like that into this if we wanted to, or is it pretty much we're past that stage and on to the, the next level?
They're asking.
We're pretty far past that stage.
So if we wanted to, like you said, the groundwater recharge in Calaveras, because, you know, we're part of the San Joaquin basin there, down at the lower end of it, of our county. So is there a way that we could get in, involved in getting funding for that? Or, you know, so that would actually implement in Calaveras? Or is that now what we have, whatever's in the, in the hopper is, is what?
We're kind of, we're pretty much at the point of what's in the hopper.
They're going to be finished in June.
Yeah. We have only five months left, so the next few months are very crucial in finalizing that portfolio, because then what happens is those projects that are in that portfolio will then become getting assessed based upon the water avail- availability analysis, so we know if they're even a viable project. So we wouldn't, at this point, we can't introduce anything else new and with the hope that it's going to get put in that final portfolio.
And then after the final portfolio goes forward, I mean, like, what's the decision-making process?
So what happens is, once the mokewise group actually has their final portfolio, these are the projects we want to put in here, these are the projects that hopefully those entities can go out and utilize this initial information to get their grant, is that we will come back to the board with that portfolio. And what they're looking for, and I say there is the mokewise group.
So how do they decide? I mean, is it a vote, a consensus?
It's a consensus. It's based on consensus. So what I would then be coming back to this board with would be that portfolio, and then basically a resolution of support for that portfolio. We have to finish in June, so we're estimating that everybody will be in a position to go to their various boards, hopefully in July of this year with that. We only have until June. June is our grant deadline. So I would expect to see something before this board, probably in July.
And then, does it part of the water resources for funding or approval or?
So then there's the, then each entity has, everybody will have their portfolio. So then you can then begin submitting grant applications for that seven and a half million dollars that's potentially available to implement your project. There's been discussions about continuing to have maybe quarterly meetings with the mokewise group, which is sort of as a check-in and an update of how everybody's doing on their projects, do they need any?
So, for example, CPUD helps would then submit the, the grant.
Correct.
It's not a, a group grant process. And they would say, well, we won't do the mokewise process. And so that will give them more standing to get that money.
Correct. That's the hope, is that because it's part of this process, this interregional coordination process, that it would give them more standing to hopefully get that grant funding. So that's the, the goal of this group.
So it mokewise then dissolves itself?
Well, potentially, yes. You, we no longer would have that grant funding, but like I was saying, there is the discussion to potentially have if stakeholders are still interested in having these quarterly, you know, meetings and check-ins of what are your groups doing? How can we help each other? How are the projects going? Are they moving forward? So those are discussions that we've been having, and it sounds like there is interest to continue meeting, even if it's just once a year, to continue with that coordination process.
Yeah. So is there any public comments?
Of course there would be public comments to this. I attended the workshop, the update that we had over at CCWD last month, and there were a couple of issues that came up in the question session with them that I did not hear here. One of them is, is that whenever you generate a project, you're always going to look at models that are most favorable to the kind of outcome that you're looking for. So I asked specifically, what are the forecast models that you are depending upon to generate? The rainfall data, for instance, that's going to help you support the project. And they told me what it was, but I'm, I'm going back through all of the other forecast model options that are out there, and many of them are showing this drought will continue through 2025. And at some point, this is going to reach a critical mass, and we're going to have to make some very tough decisions on which, what's going to be the priorities for our lifestyle and for our economy and for everything that surrounds us here in the county. So I, I agree with Cliff that we need to be thinking first about what is good for our county before we start thinking about what's good for everybody else. Secondly, I'm, I'm very concerned that there's two major players that are missing from this list. If you come back to that list that's there. Just got to go all the way back, sorry. Forward. Right there. You'll notice there's two major players that have chosen to sit on the sidelines. One of them's US Forest Service. The other one's SPI. Why aren't they in the game? And they're big, big landholders on the upper McCollum. So they, they, their impact would be tremendous. So I'm, I'm very concerned with their not being involved in this project directly as, as everybody else is. And third, don't shortchange DWR. Their primary responsibility is make money from water sales. And they've been very closely shepherding this project all the way through from its beginning, which means the ultimate goal is what? Would you think DWR? Where can we get the money from selling water? And you're right, Cliff, that's where it's at. So I want, I want you just to be left with those three things in your thought process as you look at this project. They're not negatives. It's just understanding that they're, they're there and they, they will have an impact in our decisions going forward. Okay? Appreciate your time.
I'm generous. He makes sense, and he knows what he's talking about, and he puts it so diplomatically. Well, let me change the tone. We've been having water projects for a good many, many years. I'm sure Dennis can come up with the exact dates. Couple billions and billions of dollars that were supposed to be, then it just disappeared. And I tried to talk to state senators and so on. Nobody knows where the money went. It just fizzled. Now, we have an addiction to grants, folks. You want some piece of this action? Well, here, push this to somebody else. They're more transparent down in downtown Oakland, you know, for the direction. It's not quite clear all the players over there, you know? I want to know the source of the grant? Who administering the grant? Account for the grant? And I'd like to have an audit. How many sticked fingers between the taxpayers and us going to be? I'd like to have identify, there's a number of reference to stakeholders, and it's usually nonprofit stakeholders. Nonprofits, fine, they don't pay any taxes, that's good. They can be very generous with you and my money. Stakeholders? Stakeholders? How about the stick they're holding? Who financed the stakeholders? Is it just a bunch of nice people from the community coming down, and they're concerned about my welfare? Facilitator? That's nice. Who writes his paycheck? Where's the paycheck coming from? I'd like to know what's the end result? How they going to, whatever water resource they want to hold on to? What percentage? To who? Where? Why? Dennis can give you the percentage where the water goes to. I mean, almost half of the money goes to the, the little fish over there that's going to pump down to LA. Some goes to the farmers and some we get to keep. Is that, I mean, it's, I seen a document a couple of years back, they were already talking about valve monitoring at your constituents' expense, sort of in the plan. And I'd like to see you sell it to your folks for the large land, when they're going to have to get a bill to pay for their valve monitoring. So be very careful when people want to give you something for nothing. Get to all the parties, identify themselves, and who they represent and what they represent, who they work for. We learned a lesson at the watershed, had nothing to do with anybody flooring down the river. East Bay Mud wanted to make sure they get their share, because they know some of the share that's coming down from Sacramento to the river going to be pushed down south. That water was been going on for good many years, 60, 70 years. So anyway, if you can show me the grant, the source, administer, account, and audit it. If you can account for the money, and what it's going to do specifically, not ideologically, but dollar and cents. Because I don't think they love us that much in Sacramento, or San Francisco, or East Bay. We got something they want. And I don't care how nice you folks are, but don't let them take advantage of you folks. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Joe Kelly, listening to Mr. Mills and Peter and the providers of the information, gave me cause. How does the water system work? Ownership of the water? Is it, do we have availability of water for use? The concept of Barney Way conversion from septic to sewer, three years ago, the last time I was involved with Barney Way with Mr. Walinsky, there was a big issue there then too over supposed septic into the moke. It never was proven, but the, something that if I recall, is there already a system, there a pump system that they could hook onto? So basically, if in this concept that whoever the sewer provider is would be looking at funding to be able to do that. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, it's been three years, two to three, three years or The one thing that got me that was on the print-up there, two things that got me, it's $7.5 billion grant. But the biggest thing that got me was avoid conversion of ag land to developed uses. Who came out with that little idea? That sounds more like a manifesto rather than a constitutional ability. And I think anything like that should be thrown out immediately, because then you're taking, trying to do the economic reduction of someone or keep them in a economic factor and not let them exceed that factor. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any board comments? Okay. Thank you very much. So I'll give you guys some time to take five more minutes to give planning a chance to figure out. I think we can.
No.
So we're going to move on to item number 12, planning. Provide directions to the planning department regarding notification of property owners of potential changes in land use designation with the draft general plan. Good afternoon, Peter Mauer, planning department. Back in October, when I made the last update on the general plan progress, a couple of things were asked for. One was that we look into the ability to notify property owners directly by mail of the general plan. And I, you know, come back with some options and discussion of costs associated with that. The other thing was that you want to see an updated schedule, which I left one for everyone at the desk, and also copies here at the podium. That's sort of the, the simple ones, I'll just go over that briefly. There's a yellow line, orange line down the middle, it shows sort of where we're at right now. We're in the midst of the public comment period. Once that's done, and a chair is selected for the planning commission, they'll be getting together with Chairman Edson and the new chair of the planning commission to look at how we're going to schedule public hearings on the draft plan in April and May. And once that process is completed, then we get into the EIR process, we add up all that time. The earliest that the plan will be available for adoption by the county will be June of 2016. So that's just sort of a very brief summary of the timelines of the quickest, most expeditious process that we can be looking at. So there's no surprises that we're still a year and a half off. But we are making progress and moving forward. We just completed the third of eight community workshops last night in McCollum Hill. I've been very pleased with how they've been progressing. I think it's been good information that people have been able to, to get from that. We've had a lot of one-on-one conversations with members of the public to just answer the questions about the plan. And I'm sure you will be hearing a lot from your constituents over the next couple of months as we move on in, in the process. But we're still in the public review process right now, and it's, as I keep telling one, it's a draft. It's only a draft, it's not the final document. And before we even move forward to the EIR, we want to make sure that your board, the planning commission, can weigh in on it to see that we're moving in the right direction or not. So then that leads us to the second part of this presentation, and that is the discussion of how best to notify the public of what's going on. And I think specifically the concern was what might happen with their property based of the land use designation. So I came up with a couple of options that I could think of. There is some 42,000 parcels in the county with about 32,000 individual property owners. When you look at all the multiple parcels that are owned by large corporations such as SPI, National Forest, even subdivisions that, you know, lots exist but haven't been sold out. So, and people just own more than one parcel. So the minimum number, if we were to notify every property owner of, in the county by mail of what, you know, the general plan is in process at some point in time, and just sort of a generic notice, there'd be about 32,000 pieces to mail that would need to go out. Ideally, we would be providing information, more specific parcel information as to, here's what you're currently designated, and here's what the general plan means to you, and here's how it might affect your, your property. That would be sort of the ideal as far as providing notice to people. Whether it can be done is questionable. It's just the, the data availability that we have, it's, it's just not there, and it's, it would be very difficult to make that comparison in the sort of a simple manner, in a timely manner, to provide constructive notice to, to the public. So let me back up a little bit and go into sort of the, the three options. The first one would be to just notify all the property owners that general plan is ongoing via fairly simple postcard, provide them information as to where they can find out more about what specifically happens. Provide them information as to where they can find out more about what specifically happens to their property. Contact planning, go online, various information sources we have. That would be the, um, least time consuming, but also very costly as far as just generating that much mail. It, it also would create probably a huge workload as we start getting calls and comments from the public saying, well, what's happening? It's hard for me to believe that there is, there are people in the county that don't know what general plans going on. Um, and that they're concerned about, um, what might happen to their property. They haven't already contacted us at some point in time over the last seven years. But that being said, there's a lot of people that just are so focused on their own busy lives today that maybe they really don't know. So that would be a benefit to the general public to just provide that additional notice. Cost wise, you know, sort of broken down, the, the biggest cost is just, you know, processing the mail. And I don't know if there's some way we can do that outside that might be, um, less costly. When we, when we do a mailing for, um, public notice for a project, we did one a couple of months ago. It was five hundred pieces of mail and it took us about, um, four person hours to just apply the mailing labels to the envelopes. Now, we could probably speed that up by, you know, printing them directly onto postcards. We did contact or print shop, see what was possible, do something like that. So those are the costs that, um, you know, are shown in option A there. And it really is about twenty thousand dollars worth of, of materials and time to, to do that. The next alternative, which sort of again, would be sort of the ideal, uh, would be to narrow that down to just those properties that are affected by the change, uh, in, potential change in land use designation. The problem with that is the old, uh, general plan layer is on a different, um, base layer than the new data that we have. And so you can't just do a simple comparison with, um, you know, a computer model. You know, I was hoping that we would just have that data and we could sort of, you know, compare what's A, what's B, is it different? And, and we generate the list. The other challenge with that is the old general plan has a range of options based on several criteria. Where the road situation like, does it have water, does it have sewer? And so some cases, we don't know just by looking at the land use designation, what the density is today. You have to do a sort of a site-by-site analysis of each parcel to determine. Is that a one acre density, is it a five acre density, is it a twenty acre density? And so that is really an unknown workload as far as what it would take to, to investigate. We could do sort of a simplified version, says you're currently designated X, propose to go to Y. But it wouldn't provide the whole picture. Cause what X means varies from site to site to site. So the, the amount of staff, upfront staff work to determine you're going from a five acre density to a ten acre density or twenty acre density. Or whatever the change might be, um, is really unknown at this point in time. And we may not even be able to calculate that, cause sometimes it requires studies. If someone comes in with a development project and they're proposing certain, um, density of project. They would have to provide us a, a traffic analysis and other, uh, data so that we can make the determination under the general plan, under the current general plan. You would be allowed to go to this density. And so without that kind of data, we really can't do that kind of analysis. So alternative two, although ideally would be the most informational to the public, I don't know that it can be done. But assuming that we can do that because of the reduced costs of, you know, the amount of mailing, there's probably. And I'm just really taking a ballpark guess, so I haven't really pursued this yet, maybe in the range of eight to ten thousand parcels in the county. So a quarter of the parcels might be affected by this. I mean, a lot of the parcels that, you know, people own in the, in the county, they're not changing. You look at Rancho Calaveras, you know, that's not changing. The larger subdivisions in the county, those aren't changing. What we're really looking at is some of that rural transition area, the, the fives and tens, um, that might be going to more resource oriented use. So that's sort of the key area that I think that, you know, most of the concern is as far as how the general plan might affect someone's potential land use. The third option that I came up with is sort of using current zoning as a surrogate for land use designation. And it has some advantages, it's very specific today. You know what your land is zoned, it, you know, it's very clear, who's your minimum parcel size under the zoning? And would the general plan potentially require changing that zoning? It's not a direct apples, you know, apples comparison, you're really sort of comparing two different things. But they're sort of close enough to be able to, um, use that as a, you know, as a sort of a surrogate for the general plan. The one drawback is we do have a lot of foldover zoning, the interim zoning of unclassified and highway service. That is, um, we look at that based on what the current general plan designation is as far as determining what the density is. It's leftover from a prior general plan that we never, in back in ninety-six, we adopted the current plan. We never took the next step of adopting the zoning ordinance to update that zoning. So, um, cost wise, probably about the same, this is the second alternative. But it would be a way that at least, um, we would be able to identify fairly quickly through the, um, computer modeling, computer, um, GIS data that we have to, to generate a list. And then we just have to spend the time with, um, making sure the labels get on the right envelope and get out to the right people. Financing of this, it's not in my budget right now. I mean, I do have, I did set some money aside for, um, extra printing costs and extra mailing costs for the general plan, but not to this degree. So we would need to, um, look at contingency to, to finance this. The other alternative is that we, uh, just do a much more aggressive general outreach and get people, you know, figure out other ways that we can advertise the fact that general plan is going on. Now's the time to contact us to find out what's, what's happening and, um, you know, people, you know, and help the public with identifying how the change affects them. So, um, those are my suggestions at this point. I suppose if I had a recommendation, I would end, um, with the desire to move forward with direct notice. I would go with option three, that is probably the most cost effective and informational to the public. But I am concerned a little bit about the, the costs and the time involved in doing that. Do you have any questions?
Few comments. In my experience, mailhouse, mailhouses work well. Um, you know, staff is expensive and takes a lot of time to get large pieces of mail out. And mailhouses have been effective, um, in my experience. Depending on what route we go, I think it's worth looking into a mailhouse. I, my, my first thought is to notify everybody because I think you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. You miss that one person and, you know, it just all hell breaks loose. Um, I think this is a good opportunity to kind of blanket the county and say that we are in the general plan process. And this is where we are in the process. And now it's down to, you know, your piece of, you know, Calaveras County type thing. Uh, my concern is that you'll, a lot of people won't care. There'll be some that do care and will call and find out or seek on the internet. Um, and then we'll still have those that say, I had no clue. I didn't get that postcard. But, you know, my, my struggle is, is the money. Uh, money's tight and I hate to see it kind of wasted. Twenty-four thousand dollars, if I remember right, is a, is a lot of money. And I, um, you know, have been very pleased with the notification of, as to where we are now in the general plan process. I mean, every time I turn around, um, the media's been very supportive in getting the word out. You know, kind of blanket this, these are all the meetings. And then, you know, now we have a meeting tonight or, or whatever more specific. I think that's been very helpful. You know, I've been referring people to the website to get more specific if they can't come to a meeting. Notifying the HOAs has been a good source as well. I just read, you know, a couple of bulletins here, the Farm Bureau's publication, for an example. Posted all of the various meeting dates and encouraged membership to, you know, participate or look online or those kinds of things. So I have found where that's been very successful. And kudos to you and, in your department on that. Because I, you know, every time I turn around, I'm seeing something about the general plan meetings. And I think that's very helpful and a good source of, um, you know, a, a network there. But as we get down to the nitty gritty of, you know, my piece of Calaveras County and where that fits in. I know there, there'll be folks there that, you know, won't have heard about it in some fashion. And, um, so my gut is to go with alternative one, but my concern is the money and where that might come from.
Hi, I, I think this might be an opportunity to think out of the box a little bit. Addressing the costs of, of all the options, I, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could partner with some agency or some business to share some of the mailing costs by sharing some space on that document in a way of advertising or support or something. Example might be Friends of the Fair. The fair coming up, we have a mailing to, could be forty-four thousand people or it could be a reduced amount. And that's just something we should maybe think about. I understand your predicament, Mr. Mauer, and I think you're doing a very wonderful job. But once again, think out of the box a little bit and try to cover somebody's costs. And maybe if we have success in that, we can look at option one. I know we're very limited in our timeline, but, uh, think about it.
I, uh, fortunately took the time to go to two of your events, including the one last night in McCollum Hill. And, uh, I, I, I wanna congratulate you and your staff on presenting the information and, uh, being there to answer questions, even the tough ones. A lot of work probably needs to still be done exploring how to present everything that everybody's looking for. And I'm sure that's what you're getting at today. How do we do that? I am so very reluctant to vote to another expenditure, uh, uh, you know, postage, et cetera. And I, if anything, in the last fourteen months, I got to know direct door mailing very well. And I'm upset about that, but, uh, I do, uh, it, it, it has a, an effectiveness to a degree. But I, I think even if you do that, you're still gonna get the, oh, I didn't know that that was happening. To me, after you finish your workshops, a large ad goes in the paper and tells them if you have any questions. And, uh, I know when I've been at these events, you have three different forms and I don't have them all memorized, just pop them up right now. But are those available on the, the internet so that people after can go back and get those forms? Maybe some, something newsletter type thing, uh, from planning where we direct people to it. Because I am telling people, uh, a lot and often in my district to, to, uh, to get involved with this process. I realize I was last night where they had seven community plans in the district. Did I have that right? And I have the Rancho special plan. But one compared to seven is probably a, a, a little bit of a different challenge. But, but after I did reach the people, they were satisfied and that at least we were paying attention to their concerns. So I think they can be reached, um, without a big postal market bombing of our county. By what you're already doing, maybe cap it off with an ad at the end if anybody has any problems. If we have access to the forms that you have available, uh, going forward, that might help us out too. Because I, you know, at, at the Rancho group, last night was, it was a little, uh, different for me. Because, uh, I was sort of a, an interloping supervisor in another district. But at the Rancho group, I had a lot of direct questions and, uh, so many. I'm not gonna tell anybody I remembered them all, but I was able to say, please put that on a form and please send that in. And they did do that. So I kind of rambled on a little bit about this, but if, if what you had at those meetings is available through some venues still. And maybe at the end, um, a newspaper ad that says, this is where we're at. And I, I believe that we would be where we need to be and go forward in the process.
I can tell you that if you send it out to everybody, you're gonna have a bunch of scared people. Because a lot of these folks that live, like my mom for instance, lives up by herself. And, uh, well, not completely, but, uh, but she gets mail and then, uh, you know, uh, last year she got a notice about something similar. And, uh, it frightened her because she says, what do you mean they're changing my, my land? You know, they don't quite understand it all in a lot of cases. And so, uh, her parcel wasn't gonna be changed, but we, she received a notice that it was. And, uh, scared her. So then you're drumming up a whole bunch of more, a whole bunch of more issues that really don't need to be brought up. And, you know, and frightening people that don't need to be frightened, basically. I don't have the answers on what the right, the best, best thing is. I mean, you know, you're the expert, so. Uh, I like Steve's idea about, uh, uh, putting the form out there so that people can, um, uh, if they're interested, they can mail a form in or, or have an internet where they can go fill the form out. That would be, I think, pretty good. Uh, as far as, uh, connecting to everybody, I would, at the very, you know, if, if we're gonna connect to people. I would connect to the people that their property is gonna change in some way. And that's about, I wouldn't go any further than that. I definitely wouldn't send it out to every, every property owner in the whole country. Because there's gonna be a lot of people that are upset over nothing. So that's my thoughts.
So you want more direction, huh? Maybe we'll hear from the public first.
I think what Michael said though, I mean, there might be some opportunity to joint venture, at least as another way to communicate. You know, you have your flyers and you're posting them, you got the media. But, you know, I know the homeowner associations, most of them have newsletters that go out to their membership. The billings of perhaps CCWD and the City of Angels and such that could make a notation about the general plan and refer people to the website. Wheelers, you know, I mean, there's some key groups that maybe could be targeted on that are, are very specific and in the know and need to be in the know about that. That, you know, for, I don't know, joint venture on postage or something. But I mean, maybe there's something there that as those billings are going out, there could be a, you know, a reference of two, three lines about the general plan process. And they can at least go online. I mean, most people are impressed by going online and finding, you know, where we are in the process and finding where they are on the map. I think that's been a very useful tool. So there might be some, you know, other avenues to get the word out versus a direct mail to the county. Looking at those kinds of other options.
Public comments?
Okay, having walked many, many, many precincts, Marty Crane. Many, many precincts. I can tell you that people were stunned that someone actually even came there. Thirty-five years, no one's ever been here. You learn a lot about the people that are out there. There are many people, as we learned this morning, it was alluded to that they have no broadband. Okay, so they have no access to the internet. They don't drive, they don't get a newspaper, they live in the outskirts. So if they do work away from the home, they maybe go to another county in the other direction of town. So they don't see anything that's going on in town. So they're pretty much living off the grid. Many, many people, they have power, you know, they probably have water. But, but as far as information, they're living off the information, off of the information grid. And so, um, they may not know, like, uh, Mr. Mauer, you were saying that you'd be surprised if, it's always surprising to you that someone wouldn't know that we were doing a general plan update. But I wouldn't be surprised, there's quite, probably quite a few people that aren't aware.
I'm sure you're right.
And so, uh, Ms. Panti, when you said this could be an And so Ms. Panti, when you said this could be an opportunity to at least say, hey, we're updating the general plan, are you interested? Check it out or call if you don't have access. But, you know, we have a large site, many pockets all over the place of people who are not connected in any way to lots of things. So notifying is a good thing. Maybe not saying in that check to see if your designation has been changed or to alarm people, but just say, hey, it's changing, so maybe you want to give a call and see how that applies to you. I don't know, it's probably going to be in all the wording. And I forget who mentioned something about partly, maybe it was you Debbie, about with other, like a billings going out or something and putting a few lines. I suspect that if it's not next to how much they owe, they probably won't read it, you know? But it's probably going to have a lot to do with the person receiving the mailer as to how it affects them. So just a thought.
Vicki Renke, Calaveras County, Republicans. First of all, I want to thank Peter for bringing this forward and putting together all that information on how we might reach out to property owners.
Excuse me, there's a horse in there.
We are in rural California. I think notifying property owners is a very important element of the general plan update. It is costly for the government to notify people of what they are doing to their property, but it is necessary if we live in a free society. Having the government come in and specify how their land will be used in itself is a concern to me and many others, but without the property owner's knowledge, it is unconstitutional. Property owners and property rights is one of our freedoms given to the individual. That is what has made America, America. In the executive summary of the general plan update, it states, while state law lays out a number of provisions that must be included in a general plan, there is great flexibility provided to the county to develop a plan that addresses our specific needs. And that is a good thing. We need to keep this in mind as a general plan goes forward. And I do have a suggestion how to cut the cost for notifying property owners. Let's not change eight to ten thousand properties allocations. You know, I still question why we are changing so many property land uses. You know, what is the purpose? The public needs to understand. I know that there is and has been a movement for decades to control growth and dictate to property owners how they will develop their properties or not. It seems to me that the rural counties are kind of the last frontier. I would venture to say that most people who own properties here bought it for the open space and rural living. That is what rural means. Private property owners will most likely keep it that way. It really is not for the government to dictate. I know that the board will make a decision on this, but I hope you'll keep in mind that the individuals, of the individuals, as you move forward, the property owners are and should be the most important stakeholder, no matter how much it costs. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Sir, you got my sympathy. I saw his face when he left CCWD a couple days ago. He was unhappy camper because there's a certain reality is that, well, not quite in a planning department domain. You folks, I still got this kind of sympathy for you. You got to downlive what the people got removed from there, what they established. I don't know how many familiar with ABC and only three choices. People wanted D. The gentleman, after fifteen, twenty minutes stacking, why he's decided to come in with C and B, well, he's not working here anymore, is he? Take the hint. People don't pay attention. So somebody sticks a little M-80 up there, you know what? Then they get upset. Twenty-four thousand dollars, a lot of money? Believe me, it's going to do nothing than do a referendum and recall. You folks just got on there. You better do it straight, honest, openly. There's so many outstanding things out there. This, not this board, this body, okay? Did anybody spend the money on flood zones? Is it in the planning department? All the properties in a flood zone? Most of us people still don't know they're in a flood zone. Do you realize that? From the board of supervisors, supposed to care so much for the constituents and it's nothing, I don't think any one of you participated, seventy-four, seventy-five, hundred parcel in a flood zone and they don't know it? They don't really been able to compute that who put them in there and how they got in there? Twenty-four hundred dollars, twenty-four thousand dollars, a lot of money, thinking about it? The value of the properties that's going to be changed and how it's going to affect that property owner's property value. So how a lot more than twenty-four thousand dollars? That's a hell of a lot more. If you don't do your total disclosure and the consequences of those changes, it's going to come back at you, folks. This kind is not dysfunctional like some supervisors thought before. That's why you're all up there. Open, transparent, and honest. Cut the BS out of there. Explain why you're doing it, how it's going to affect them, because they will make the
Joe Kelly, twenty to twenty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money, but so is one point some odd million dollars, a whole lot more money that could have been better spent by previous boards. I believe under the Brown Act, the very first section of it, where it says you folks are our employees, basically, and what you do, we want to know about, leads to everybody in this county. So I would say there is a notification concern there. I would also ask, does the county have a legal responsibility of notification? And I think I just answered that with the Brown Act. Says yes, you do. Maybe there's something else I don't know of that says no, you don't, but I think you Constructive notice to the public is important. What about public service announcements going with whatever radio station's around? The one out of Sonora, they talk about here, the one here in your district, I believe, does music, maybe they could throw something in? That would be very good for your district, I think, for notification. Other methods, TV and radio. I mean, it's, they probably have something out there that could be done. What is the attendance count so far for each of the meetings that have been held? We didn't hear anything about that, to see if it's a large overwhelming or not.
I think it's been about three thousand and ten people.
Out of all, yeah, okay.
I'm teasing.
So this is what is getting to me is when does government control of property rights or property go too far? The simple stroke of a planner's pen can change a property owner's world to an economic negative. You folks are looking at negative results in this county by being behind chasing the dollar. Changing the parcel designation, whether or without the owner's knowledge, can place a financial burden on the owner as to whether or not that use designation is in alignment with how the parcel is being used or how the owner wants to use it. So you have an obligation to notify any way you can. If you guys, if you folks can go out, as we've seen on the agencies you go to, such as Park and Recreation, where it came out, the old folks aren't wanting to do it too much anymore, or maybe a few are, but there's not a big list of people wanting to go up, but you wanted to hold it over so you could go out and start chatting it up. Maybe more needs to be done by you folks to chat it up with your constituents out in your communities to get a knowledge of it. Or as Ms. Crane said, start walking your districts.
Please just share one tiny little thing, whatever you end up sending out. It's been my experience that if I have to go like this, I'm probably not going to read it. Please use large print. We do have a third of our population that would, probably more, that would appreciate that. Thank you.
If I may just quickly, one other thing. That thing I brought up this morning and gave you a copy of, that's important. That needs to be done immediately, not a staged timing of it, but right now. So if you would please take a look at that and get an idea of what, how you're going to evolve that to make this general plan much more cohesive and comprehensive. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public about the board? Anything else? We have to come up with something that...
What do you reckon? Because we have about five different approaches here.
Five of three is what I heard.
Well, in response to Mr. Kelly's comment, government code does not require written notice on something like the general plan. Not required, doesn't mean it's not advisable, it's not required. I had my druthers, we would do a very extensive general outreach without mailed notice, just for my ability to continue moving forward and all the other responsibilities in my department. But given the desire to provide more direct notice...
What do you mean an extensive outreach? Define that a little more.
Basically, everything that's been suggested here is another way to get the word out. And do an ad in the papers, contact radio stations, see if there's PSAs, contact homeowner associations, every other special district in the county, see if we're going to add some notice to their mailings. Just track down every possible means of providing notice to the public that this is going on right now. And now is the opportunity to look at the maps, see what's happening and look at the policies. And I would do it immediately. I wouldn't wait till the end of it so that people have the opportunity to look at it and think about it and respond during this public review period and, you know, while we, and when we get into the hearings with the commission and board.
Hey, Peter?
Yeah.
How has the attendance been at these meetings?
We've had about forty-five to sixty-five people, I guess, in the range. Forty-five at one, I think we had fifty-five in other, and we had sixty-five last night, I believe, people that came. So it's not a huge amount of people, but it's a pretty good turnout for a...
Were many of them the same people?
There are some, but I would say for the most part, they're, you know, they're from that community. And there's been, I would say, maybe a dozen or so people that have showed up, more than...
Because in San Andreas, I only seen like three people from my community, and the rest of them were for somebody else's community. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering if people actually comprehend or realize what the general plan is. I mean, we all do because we're in it.
I live it. I think that is, you know, it's a problem, people don't understand what it was it mean. So I've got two thoughts, I'm just thinking out loud right now. General notice to everyone would provide blanket awareness that this is happening and no one could say they didn't know. They may choose not to have read the mailing, and I think a lot of people will just, oh, something from the county, I don't see, I don't pay anything, good, put in the trash. It would also generate some of the fear that, so if you had spoken out, if people didn't know, what does this mean, what are they doing? And, you know, they'll call us and we can explain, well, look up your parcel? No, nothing changes. Oh, okay. Then why'd you send out the mailing? But, you know, again, I think it's just good public policy to try to inform the community the best we can. The alternative would be try to narrow that focus, reduce the mailing costs. It would increase staff time and increase the upfront effort to get the information narrowed down somewhat. I'd have to work closely with the GIS team and my staff to come up with what's the computer comparison that we need to do. If it's this zoning and it's proposed to go to this general plan designation, is that a significant change that would require, you know, would kick it into the notice category? Or if it's currently, you know, one acre parcel zone for residential and it's staying as low density residential, then that's no change, therefore, you know, there's no requirement for notice. I think those are the two options. I really, I don't have a preference. Can we some direction?
What's the board?
If we were to spend any monies above what's budgeted, it would come out of contingencies.
Yeah.
Is that pretty much where we are?
Correct.
All right. And I see our mid-year budget review is next meeting?
Yeah, room, please. All right.
Question for legal. If we fail to notify somebody that their zoning has changed or they're confused, what's our way to work?
Well, one I want to clarify, this doesn't have anything to do with zoning. This has to do with the land use designation of the general plan. Zoning is something that would come up after, that's something that we'll be addressing after the general plan is actually adopted. There's nothing, as Peter Mauer indicated, there's nothing in the government code that requires notice, direct mailed notice. But that is kind of the statute, statutorily and the Brown Act is kind of the baseline bottom of what we would have to do. That doesn't mean that we can't do more. So although the government code says that we don't have to provide direct notice, certainly we can, but I don't see that if we don't that we would be exposed. But certainly, that's base floor. You can always aim for higher expectations.
Thank you. So, I mean, at the very least, I feel that we should notify folks that has their land use designation changed. Like she said, like Megan said, the zoning won't come up later, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Well...
You've talked about this, I think, because simply because you're changing the name of it, you know, that's not that meaning. So I'm worried about the staff time on that part. I think maybe it's, would end up being cheaper to just mail to everybody and say, we're updating the general plan, you know, contact us for more information.
Well, there'll be some staff time there.
Maybe.
About forty-two thousand.
I think most people would be like...
I see it as, you know, we can use this as an opportunity to educate the general public that we are truly updating the general plan of where we are. I mean, it's been, what, eight, nine, ten years of stuff, as well as just a lot of information, misinformation, et cetera. So if we took this as an opportunity to notify the general public that we're in the general plan process update, refer people to our website, refer people to, you know, a phone number for additional information. Somehow, it just helps communicate to the broader community that this is where we are in the process and they can take a look at the map and see where they fit into this process and be able to voice, you know, a concern, question, whatever it might be. I think that, you know, just again, my concern is the money. Are we talking about, you know, if it's twenty-four thousand dollars, and I think a mail house is a good option, it's worth looking into. If you have eight thousand dollars in the budget for this process now and we find out that it is twenty-four thousand, then that's a little different in regards to the general fund and the contingency. I feel like... I feel like if we, if we want to pursue that option, maybe have you go back and take a look at what those options are and the costs, and come back to us at our next meeting about, you know, it's going to be another ten thousand dollars to do this project, or the mailhouse is this, or, you know, now we're really looking at forty-two thousand people versus forty thousand, whatever, more, more concrete if we can narrow down an alternative. And if we can't afford it overall, then I think we need to look at all these other avenues. But I know that that will take staff time to coordinate it. I mean, just making flyers and getting them out and emailing, and it takes a dedicated effort to do that.
Is it, is it that expensive? I mean, I remember sending out flyers and, you know, bulk mailing. And it didn't seem to, it wasn't that expensive for us.
I mean, there's different avenues, I mean, the numbers that you use...
I think we could probably find ways to reduce the time, and that's the biggest cost associated, you know, and rather than having my staff do it, and have to pay whatever they get, we could get a mailhouse and they're paying people, you know, much less to do that kind of stuff. If it's just a generic mailing, we could do that. I think that would be simple, and I think we can, you know, if we send out one notice, postcard or something, to every individual property owner, not, not every parcel, because there's people that have multiple, you know, but if we can narrow, and we can narrow it down by the individual, so they get, you know, one mailing, we could probably reduce the cost. I don't know that's actually what that would be, but we could certainly look into a mailing house, and maybe if you have some suggestions, who's out there?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can share with you who I've used, but...
I think that's probably from the cost effectiveness as far as our time, that's probably the best way to go, if that's the intent of the boards, is to provide something other than, you know, a more general notification.
And another thing a mailhouse can do for you is, you know, you can say, we want this zip code released on this day, and three days later, this zip code, we might do it by supervisor districts, because, you know, the influx of phone calls will typically come within that five-day time period of getting a postcard. I mean, the longer they wait, then typically people don't respond, you're going to get that immediate response, so you might want to phase in your, your mailings if that's the way we go.
I think maybe it's the message on the card, maybe if it's not that involved, your staff isn't getting involved. Because when I've done these every door direct mailing for the postal service, they actually have a service that comes and they'll do the card for you, and there's not much involved with it. And it's exactly what Debbie just said, you target zip codes and you may not even mail all the zip codes if you, you don't think so, but there seems to be a public concern that everybody gets a notice.
Yeah.
So even if you do that...
And we have a lot of absentee landowners too that live in, you know, outside the community, so...
Right.
Yeah, but they're the ones that pay attention.
Well, that's what I find in, yeah, my particular district.
I get, I get calls from them folks.
Yeah, I've gotten emails from, from folks that, you know...
They're the ones who are signed up on the email for the general plan and are getting notification and...
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Ricky, you have another comment or a question?
Only because when I talk about property owners in this general plan, I'm not talking about like me, I just have a house on a lot, it's not going to affect me, but it, does it make it any better, is it any different if you're just going after, just the properties that are commercial or something? You know what I'm getting at, the properties that are going to, maybe you have a piece of property, you want to develop it on a house, and now you're going to put something in the general plan that says no, you never can put a house there? Those are the people that I'm talking about. Is that, is that a new way to get parcels?
That's what I tried to look at as far as the options and doing that research and narrowing that panel...
So there's still too much research, even that?
Is the hard part.
Okay.
And the notice is the easy part, I'd like to be able to do that, is trying to figure out who might be affected by...
Even if they aren't necessarily affected, but you know that's the kind of property that it could be?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, there's a lot of judgment called in.
I know it's possible, but one of the things that, at the ranch show, came up, you have two different sides, maps for the area. A lot of people would like to lay one over the other one, so they can see, hey, this is my property, this is a square or so on. There is available to have clear plastic, take a picture of what is proposing, transfer a clear plastic sheet, take a look at, do the same thing to the old one, lay one over the other one, and they can see, people can see, flip it over. Oh, no changes. Oh, yes, my neighbor is going to be changing. That's one, as far as the money goes, folks, maybe you can combine what Public Works, they still your staff, as far as notification goes, get them in gear, and that does affect planning. Show and identify all the properties that are in a flood zone. Combine, hey, they should do the flood zone, he's going to do the planning, combine to inform people. Now, the Simmons Junior made a comment about, we got a basic, we had no problems. I had a teacher a long, long time ago, when I was trying to be smart, a lot of things are right that are not legal, a lot of things are legal that are just not right. Okay? Do you do diligence, open and transparent, make an effort? They've been dragging it for so many years, and so many prior planning directors, put them in a spot, they just dribble and dribble and dribble. You got an opportunity, it's a big deal, and you do, you get to satisfy a couple of schmucks in Sacramento, let's get that straight, okay? But, open and transparent, make the effort, because if you don't, fine, you don't think it's, legally, I'm not doing, willing to do it. You need to break in on another bunch of supervisors in here?
That's what we're attempting to do, Peter.
What, replace the supervisors or...
No, we're attempting to be...
I know, but the more, people can understand it, they're not going to get upset, and you don't want me to put my interpretation.
Intercept.
So, go to Public Works, they got money. They got money, folks. They don't know what to do, they don't know what happened to Public Works, okay? They're still your staff, you run them. Combine it for a good deed to be open and transparent. Thank you.
Think about how much time we have.
Three minutes.
Oh.
I think you could beat this to death, trying to find every parcel owner everywhere, I mean, when people are talking, I remembered living in Mountain Ranch, and when I lived there in American Loma Cereza, the parcel behind me and the parcel in front of me were both undeveloped, and both of those owners lived in different parts of the world, literally, one lived in Europe, another in Israel. I never saw them in the five years, six years I lived there. We could, we could try forever to do that. If we make a good faith effort and you mail to the zip codes, there's just a point where how much can we do to get to every single person? And maybe that won't cost you so much staff time, because once you've got, you can tell them what you want to say on the card, they do it for you, and then you just target the zip codes, and it's all done for you. And it's much, your staff really has nothing to invest in, other than all the calls they're going to get right after, which will come.
We're, excuse me, Charlie? We're going to probably have to take a break here. Are you going to switch it? Okay. Let's resume. Mr. Kearney?
I kind of already said what I, my point was, research every door direct, look at the zip codes and mail on, I, you could look for parcel holders across the world forever and not find them all.
We have the list, you know, we just get it from the tax assessors, you know, the most current roll, and it's going to be the most updated list we have, that's not a problem.
It hurts me to spend the money on it, but it seems to be the public, strong public sentiment that that's what should be done, and...
Yeah, just take a look at the different toss, you know, go the cheapest way to mail to everybody.
Well, if you're comfortable, we'll do, we'll do a, a general mailing to all property owners. I'll work with Shirley to, you know, work with, within our budget and whatever is available in the agency, and we'll get it out as quickly as we can so that people are notified now during this, you know, review process, so they have the ability to speak up, you know, prior to or, you know, during the public hearing process when it gets back to the board.
Also, if you just take a look at the budget, the overall budget you have, you know, for the general plan, maybe there's something that, you know...
Oh, I know how to be flexible.
So basically, it would be option number one?
Yes.
And maybe in that, you could put, the remainder meetings, were they being held?
Would be too late.
Will it be too late?
Probably, yeah. By the time that gets out, we'll be almost done.
At least three weeks to...
Yeah.
Mobile ends.
Get all this.
But maybe we'll be able to notify or provide some notice of the board, the board planning conditions.
Yeah, there you go.
If you have some info in there, it'd be good.
Not too much, because we don't, too small print, but...
Yeah, do big print.
Peter, I'd be more than happy to give you those referrals that I have on mailhouses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess that's word direction then, right?
Sounds like it.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you for your, all your work, too. I know you guys are, you and your staff are working, extra duty going to these meetings. I appreciate it. I know the public appreciates it, too.
Thank you.
Sit. All right?
Thank you.
So we have four more comments?
Agenda thirteen, sir. I attended a COG meeting last Wednesday. We elected a new chair, John Gomes, who's our public member to the board, and Elaine from Morris from the city as our vice chair. We heard a very detailed report on our transit system, we had it analyzed, you might say. It's been at least a six-month process, and heard a report about various options and proposals and such on how to improve upon our system, keeping going the way we are, because there have been changes here in the last six months to a year in regards to how the county is managing transit, to looking at JPAs, to looking at all sorts of other options. So the COG will be taking a look at the next meeting as to how we might want to pursue these options, perhaps a task force put together to explore these options a little bit more to see, to see if we can be more efficient in our transit system. The EMS meeting I have tomorrow in Copperopolis. We also have our Public Works finalist special meeting tomorrow. In regards to the GP, I just made note, but I just think the planning has done a great job in getting the publicity out there about our community meetings. Hearing that there's forty to sixty people is pretty good for a meeting. I've been to meetings where there's four to six people, so that's, that's pretty good. And appreciate the support we're getting so far in folks getting the board out through their various newsletters, things along that line. And just a reminder that the Copperopolis meeting is for next Thursday, February nineteenth, from five to eight p.m. at the Armory. Last meeting, I'm asking the board to consider, we had from Dennis Mills, he's putting together a Highway Four water ad hoc committee, and I would ask for the boards, if we could, I don't know if we need to agendaize this or not, but I'd like to be the representative on this particular committee, and want to be able to, to ask for that permission and not violate any Brown Act and things along that line. So I don't know if that needs to be agendaized and take it up at some point. And then the other item that I'm getting a lot of inquiries from is the TOT. This kind of stems from Copperopolis area, where we have the, the ordinance in place about people who are using their homes as a business to vacation rentals and this sort of thing. When reservations are made through the internet, oftentimes there's not the opportunity to collect the TOT, and I have folks in the Copperopolis area who have asked for the board to consider something along those lines to be able to capture that TOT with those who book online. Some property owners are better than others in regards to identifying the tax, collecting the tax, and sending it into the county. And it then just so happened, days later, I received something from the Arnold area, and I guess some folks have been, might say, coffee, coffee klatch discussion about the TOT, because Arnold area two has probably a much larger number of rentals, vacation rentals in that area, and many of them were finding, going through internet resources to book online, whereas before, maybe they utilized a local realtor and there was some mechanism to capture that. So I'd like to see that possibly put on the board agenda for some discussion about TOT in general, and perhaps the visitor center can make a presentation on how the TOT is being utilized, and we might hear from more public in regards to vacation rentals and the collection of this tax. And it might be collected, I'm not quite sure, that's why I bring it up. These are probably a half a dozen people who have given me the impression that this is not being collected, and therefore the county is losing. So, and I think we're going to see more, more internet purchases, you might say, in that regard, or rentals through the internet. And that's how, that's all I have.
Okay. Mike? I was pretty busy. I did attend some private meetings, one is the Murphy's Park area. They were considering, the Murphy's Park committee was considering replacing their existing sod with artificial turf, and that's going to be a study going to be going down the road a little bit, of course, these are preliminary meetings. I did meet with several people regarding our code compliance as a result of our meetings we had here at the last board supervisors meeting. I've been able to assist those folks in at least getting some action to address the problems in their neighborhoods and communities, thanks for the help of folks over code compliance, of course, CAO Ryan. I did meet with gentlemen in establishing a rehabilitation center. We are in the very preliminary stages of that up in the Arnold and Murphy's area. We're exploring that, I did meet with Sam Leach, our probation department, and was able to put those two folks together for a preliminary setting of what possibly can be done and what can't be done. I did have an interesting meeting with the folks at Bear Valley, just talking with the general manager up there. Very productive. I saw with my own eyes what they have done, what they are doing, and I'm very impressed with that. They acknowledged in that meeting that they need our county, they need our Highway Four access, they need our tourism, and they are willing to work with us. I was able to arrange several meetings with some key individuals, this will take place in a couple of weeks, one of them being the Economic Development Committee out of Tooleby County, and of course, our folks here locally. I had, I attended an EPOC meeting, and very exciting, they've changed leadership, and I was able to address our board of the Homer Associations, and I think that kind of dovetails into the fact of our best source of information could be attending those meetings and passing on our general plan procedures and things going on there. I did attend Murphy's Business Association meeting, we talked about the Irish Days coming up, and that committee is doing a great job. I also attended GABA, which is the Greater Arnold Business Association meeting last night, pretty impressed there. I want to close just by touching a little bit on the issues brought up by Supervisor Ponte regarding the TOT tax and... regarding the TOT tax, and there's not, there is a couple of things we'll need to clarify. Those folks that are actually renting out their homes to a property manager or slash Realtor are collecting the TOT tax when it goes through a facility like that. I was able to speak with some folks at, uh, we did some research on what was available on the internet for rentals in the Arnold area in District Three. Surprisingly enough, there's quite a few listings, quite a few listings. A general rule of thumb shot saying if they were able to collect all those based on the history of rentals up in the Arnold area and the Murphy's area, we could be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars if we're not taking the opportunity to collect off the TOT tax over a period of year. Those are estimates based on the available rentals on the internet. So, that's something I think we should really look into. Uh, I do want to stress the fact that the folks that do offer their rental homes or vacation homes through a property tax or through a property management company or Realtor are paying that TOT tax. So, we're looking at a target group that are selecting to use internet services, uh, to rent their homes and bypassing the system. Here, one quick note. It's interesting that they have made a deal with Amazon. Uh, this is another, uh, community, not, not in our county, and, uh, ironically, they've, they've been able to make a deal with Amazon with their collecting, their TOT tax. I've done some further research into that. That's about it, folks. A series of meetings, uh, CSAC on my schedule here, and some things in the few, uh, next two weeks. Pardon? I did attend COG. Uh, I failed to mention that. I attended with Supervisor Ponte, uh, and I found that to be a very interesting, my first COG meeting, so I got a little education as an alternate. So, hopefully, uh, I'll continue that.
And I, I want to thank Supervisor Olivera for attending COG in my place. I, uh, at the, same time, I had two appointments to do other things. At first, I also want to thank Ed Lark with, uh, Public Access Television, because he has tried to schedule me to do an interview twice now, and, uh, for the second time, he was generous about, uh, understanding that I had something else to go do, because, uh, the planning, uh, department scheduled Ranch at Calaveras General Plan Workshop that evening, and obviously, as the supervisor of District Five, that was a very important attendance. So, thanks for attending my, my spot, and I got assigned to COG in the first meeting I missed, but it was for good reason. Uh, I did attend the General Plan Workshop, uh, Ranch at Calaveras. Um, I said it earlier, and I'll say it again, the, the planning department is doing a good job of taking the show and moving it around. It's an exhausting process. Uh, I congratulate them. I also attended last evening, uh, General Plan Workshop in McCollum Hill. I am so glad that I did that. Uh, it was an entirely different experience for me as a supervisor, uh, because I was not necessarily hearing from people directly in my district, was hearing from people in another district with, uh, unique, uh, concerns to their district. So, uh, it, it was a very good visit. Um, I attended a, a meeting in Stockton. Uh, this is an offshoot of their Chamber of Commerce of the Business Education Association, and I attended that because I've been working on an internship program through our schools, uh, for a government internship program, and I'm just about the point where I need to bend our councils here with what I've got. Uh, and it was very good. Uh, they had a well-developed internship program through, uh, the State Assembly, State Senate, and also the United States Congress that those students down there get involved in, and maybe this is a stepping stone to bringing some of that up here in addition to, uh, what I did. But it, but it was a, a very good visit, a very good meeting to attend, and, uh, it really encouraged me to get that project down the road. Uh, I have, uh, I did announce that I have office hours between one and three. They've been very quiet so far. It's at Ranch at Calaveras every Thursday. Um, I'll continue to do them. Um, I, if nobody shows up, I'll keep working, but I suspect as I'm there longer and longer, people will catch on, and they will, uh, come to visit and tell me what's on their mind. Um, I, uh, one of my assignments is the Solid Waste Task Force, uh, so I have been learning a lot about our garbage collections. Um, somebody was teasing me that I am the garbage supervisor, but that's okay. I'm really willing to take that on. Uh, I visited, uh, I said earlier, I visited, uh, several of the transfer stations with Mark Zane of Gambi Disposal. Uh, Gambi Disposal, if you, when you're from the outside looking in, you probably, or you may not understand how our solid waste works, and once you get involved in it, you, it starts to get clearer. Gambi Disposal has a contractor run our transfer stations, and, uh, he was, uh, kind enough to let me tag along with him while he visited, uh, uh, the Avery Transfer Station, the Red Hill Transfer Station, and the Copperopolis, and I'll tell you, they are very, very busy. Avery, uh, I think their record is nearly twelve hundred cars in one day. That is immense, uh, and it is, uh, a well, uh, used system. Uh, Copperopolis is a tiny postage stamp of a spot, and while I was there, in the, uh, thirty minutes we were there, probably twenty cars shuffled through, and he said it wasn't busy. So, they are using these. Um, you know, we do need to continue to develop our, uh, recycling, uh, ethic that we have here, and we also need to support those attendants there. Um, I didn't even have a jacket on, and somebody got mad at me because he had to show his, uh, I.D., and I thought, holy smoke, I'm going to have to get a, if I ever do that again, I'm going to get a forest jacket, so at least I know I'm official when I'm getting abused. Uh, Supervisor Edson and I attended, and I am so thankful that we did, a staff meeting of the transfer station attendants at Gambi Disposal. It was very insightful, hard-working group of people. Um, I, I don't know if we're all aware, but our transfer station system is unique to Calaveras. Um, I don't know of anywhere else in California that does something like that, and, uh, we've invested in it. It's kept, uh, our county cleaner without a doubt. Uh, there are a lot of ways to get rid of your garbage, and that's certainly one of them. Uh, and that's all that I can remember that I did. I have to start writing it all down. Every day, start running into one another.
No kidding? Alright, um, so, I had a, quite a busy, uh, couple of weeks here. Uh, met with Mary Suwicky, um, the Health and Human Services, uh, the sheriff, um, and, uh, Captain Macedo. Um, a lot of crossover in some of the issues. You'd be surprised, uh, how much crossover there is. Um, so, working to, uh, continue to, to, uh, pursue, you know, better communication, especially with those departments. Um, attended the First Five meeting, um, and, uh, another great group of, of folks. Um, the dental task force, um, is involved with First Five as well, especially the zero to five, uh, age range of First Five. Uh, really important to get, uh, make sure those kids get, uh, access to dentists, um, at early age. Um, I, uh, attended, and I was a judge at the four-H Regional Presentation here in San Andreas, um, and, uh, that was, that was really fascinating with these little kids. Uh, you know, there's only like three judges in this room and a few people, but they get up and they're like, you know, shaky and nervous, and it's, it's just a wonderful experience to, uh, to be able to, you know, teach kids, you know, given the opportunity at that early age to, to get up and, and talk, uh, in front of, uh, people, you know, and prepare, uh, because it's something that, you know, I think, uh, certainly by the time we reached this board, we, we've gone through a lot of it, but when we start out, you know, it's, it's really challenging as adults to learn how to speak, uh, in, in public, and so I think it's an important, uh, thing. So, I was happy to be part of that. I, I learned quite a bit about, um, uh, things I, I didn't know much about as well, especially, uh, lambs. I don't know, you know, didn't know much about sheep, so now I know more. Um, I attended the Mental Health Board. The Mental Health Board is, uh, going strong. Um, uh, there's a, there's a lot of, uh, really tough issues there. Uh, you know, getting, uh, mental health, um, services to the people that need them in our rural, uh, society is, uh, is a constant challenge. Um, I, I did attend the Moke Hill, uh, General Plan, uh, meeting last night. The big topic in the thing about District Two is that we do have all these community plans that were approved, um, in the prior, uh, update and the draft update, uh, before this one, and so they were, uh, amazing amount of, of involvement from the community members. Um, and so there was a, uh, you know, a real letdown by, uh, you know, fulfilling of a letdown by most of the people in my district that were part of that process, than to see that all that work and all that effort they put in it, and now they have like one tiny little line in the general plan that says, you know, Moke Hill, you know, will look like Moke Hill. And, you know, so there's a, uh, there's a lot of resentment and anger and disappointment. But, that said, people are still working constructively, uh, and they turned out last night. Most of them from Moke Hill. Some of them were from, uh, Copperitas. Um, on another hot topic item, uh, the bridge replacement study that's going out there that will eventually come to our board. I'm getting, uh, lots of emails and, uh, calls on that. I've met with, uh, several of the community members that are concerned about protecting that historic bridge. Um, let's see. Also attended a Friends of the Road Flat School, um, meeting. Um, you know, those, those guys just continue to, uh, to support that school, um, that tiny community that does just a wonderful job of bringing enrichment classes, you know, things that we used to have, uh, in regular school without needing the, the support of the community. Uh, they've been providing through, uh, fundraising and local support like music and sports. Um, and so, uh, it's just, it's really empowering to, to work with those guys and see what a small group of people can do. And hopefully, we can continue as a board to support, uh, the small schools, uh, in Calaveras, all the schools in Calaveras. I know that many people on this board have really been supportive of that. Um, and finally, I met, uh, I attended my first fishing game, uh, meeting, um, commission meeting. That was great. I appreciate the, appreciate that Debbie. It's a good group of people. It's a whole, it's almost a whole new, uh, I think there's three different, uh, board members on there. So, it's a, it's a pretty good, uh, pretty good, uh, group of people there. So, um, I, I look forward to, to be working with them. Um, you know, they talk about stuff like, uh, the, uh, the rare flat deer herd, uh, migration, you know, and the fact that it's, they didn't migrate, uh, down from the higher elevations this year. So, that was just one example of the topics that we talked about.
Oh, yeah. It's very interesting.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
So, then, uh, and then coming up, I'll be attending the CSAC, uh, Conference as well as the alternate, um, there, and, uh, I don't know, have you had a chance to, did you look at the different committees you could be on, um, for CSAC?
Yeah, I, I took a browse through it. As soon as we get down, I'll be doing, we get depth.
Yeah.
We had to download.
Yeah.
A hundred and eighty-two pages.
Yeah, yes. Uh, but you can also, as a CSAC rep, you can be part of the different committees. In fact, any board member can be, you don't even have to be, uh, representative. You can be part of the subcommittees, and so they have, uh, four key subcommittees, and, uh, I attended one of those meetings, um, online, the Natural Resources Subcommittee. Uh, so, it's a, it's a really good way to tie in to, to like what a lot of other, uh, people are giving the counties in the state.
You can participate via, like, a webinar or online.
Yeah, you just, you just go, CSAC, uh, contact them, those, those, and then you'll be on the, uh, emails, and you can just, you know, you can even do it on, I do it on the iPad. Um, and so, it's, that's...
Can you do, um, some meetings through that way?
Yeah, yeah, conference calls.
Conference calls.
I've seen that, yeah, but be nice.
One meeting and conference call.
Yeah, so that was, uh, we've got a bunch of stuff coming up, so I'll just pass off.
Okay, so on the twenty-seventh, I went to the Annual Chamber Awards Dinner along with a lot of people in here, and, um, yeah, at the awards dinner, they, uh, awarded, um, a few businesses, some special awards, like Entrepreneur of the Year. With, uh, that went to Salon Chic Boutique, uh, in Valley Springs. Uh, Business of the Year was Camps Restaurant, uh, and Sherry Smith is, uh, in charge of that. Uh, Small Business of the Year was Middleton's, and, uh, Nonprofit Business of the Year was Common Ground Senior Services Incorporated. And then the Community Action Awards were given to, uh, businesses that do a lot in the community, uh, for people that you may, you know, some people may never hear about, but, uh, um, you know, I, and I thought I, I did a lot in the community, but there's people that, that do a lot in the community. And so, uh, Gould Electric was, Incorporated was one of them, and, uh, Foothills Drug Store, uh, was another one, and they, uh, so, these folks were recognized by our, our Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, it's really nice to see that they, you know, they, they encompass the whole county, uh, when they made their decision, and, uh, I know that, uh, Stacy Johnston, um, put a lot of time and effort into that. She, she really worked hard on it. So, that was a great event, real nice, nice event. And then also, uh, John Germaine Jr. became a, um, uh, executive board member for, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, I had a conference call with Senator Berryhill, yeah, regards to the Watership Management Pilot Program for, uh, Calaveras, for Calaveras, and, um, seemed to be really excited about it. Um, he was really excited at the fact that he didn't know that we had a groundwater management plan here that had been, uh, in place for the past twelve years. And so, uh, that, that really got his attention. So, anyhow, so, uh, he, he's interested in trying to find funding, uh, and we'll just wait to see how that goes. Um, then, on, uh, that evening, went to the Town Hall for a General Plan Update in, in San Andreas, and Peter and his staff was there, you know, working hard. Uh, there was a couple of people making them work extra hard, and, but, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's the position you took, huh, Peter? On the second, um, I had a grand jury interview, and, um, uh, on the third, I met with, uh, as Steve mentioned, we met at Gambi's for, uh, their, their, um, employee meeting, and they, they're pretty darn efficient with their doing. Um, we have, we have an issue with, uh, recycle in the county. We're currently, the county's, uh, at fifty-one percent, and, uh, the state says we have to be at least fifty percent, but it took us fourteen years to get to fifty-one percent, so they're not real happy with us. And, uh, so they keep a close eye on this, and, and, um, I'm glad that Steve has stepped into the Solid Waste Task Force, because I, I feel now that, uh, there'll be a great amount of attention given to, uh, the programs that we need to be able to move forward in a much quicker manner. So, uh, recycling is a big one, uh, for us. Um, on the fifth, I went to the Valley Springs Area Business Association meeting, and, uh, you know, it was their annual meeting, uh, so they were talking about, you know, how do we increase our membership? Uh, I think there was like ten people that showed up, and, you know, they're, they're having the same, a lot of the same issues that a lot of, a lot of these, uh, um, people are having or these groups are having is getting, you know, the, the same ten people, uh, work really hard, and it's, it's a eighty, or ninety-ten rule in this case, uh, at the county, this county's case. But, uh, they have a great, uh, group of people down there that work year-round to promote their businesses, and, um, um, you know, I think that they're on the right, right direction right now from what I heard, uh, the other night. They're talking more about, uh, having more internet access and, and going more, uh, electronic, and that will increase their membership for sure, and their exposure to, for their businesses. On the sixth, I had a meeting with Sam Leach over at, uh... Yeah, probation, uh, about a workability program, and so, uh, he basically just wanted to brainstorm, uh, with me on ideas on what we, what we could do about these, uh, about early release, uh, folks. Uh, you know, there's a, a huge educational gap in there, I think. Uh, there's a lot of programs out there federally, but in the state, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot, and, um, you know, there's, there are some people around here that do a, uh, just a, an exemplary, um, uh, job helping with the education of prisoners, and, but it's, you know, it's, it needs to be, it needs to happen more, because there's going to be, they're going to be overwhelmed soon. And so, uh, we were just kicking around ideas on, uh, you know, what could, uh, what could come about, and he was looking for, for, um, contacts on who would be interested... And he was looking for, for contacts on who would be interested, like for instance, volunteer groups that could use some folks, you know, that they have that are low-risk, that could go help them with, you know, different projects and things like that. On the 7th, we, yesterday, we had a, yesterday, we had a meeting in Amador about Delta College. Amador's having a hard time with their filling their online classroom, and so, and of course, we're having trouble filling our in-classroom for Delta College. This, actually, this semester is better than it was last semester, so we're moving forward. But, so we, we thought we'd share resources a little bit, and if somebody can't get a class here and they can get an online class there, then maybe we can advertise that rather than having them head down to Stockton or into Columbia. We could just do it here, keep them closer. And so, and then the same over there, if their, if their folks need some classes and we can offer them, then we could, they're going to advertise our classes over there, and so that those, those kids could, or people could come over here too. Tonight, I have a CPUD presentation on Calaveras Watershed Management Program, asked for a letter of support. And tomorrow night, tomorrow is Chamber Board Meeting. And then at Camps at, I believe it's 6 o'clock, is it 6? Vicky? 6 o'clock at Camps. There's going to be a discussion on AB 142, and I plan on showing up to that because I want to learn more about it. And so if you want to learn more about that particular assembly bill, then show up at Camps and get educated.
It's at Fireside Room.
Fireside Room?
Next to Camps.
Okay, it's at Fireside Room up at, next to Camps. And then on the 12th, Chris, Chris and I have a, a meeting with Sierra Nevada Conservancy regarding the Watershed Management Program. That's at 10 o'clock here. And then, 10:30, yeah. I put 10, so I won't be late. 9:30, that's it. And then on the 13th, which is Friday, I'll be in Sacramento at 10:00 a.m. for another, for a presentation to R C R C staff on the Watershed Management Program. Sure?
You forgot to mention Supervisor Edson. You did a lovely job presenting the resolution to Bob Campagnon at the Golden Health Awards.
Oh, that's right. Didn't somebody mention him earlier? Yeah, Debbie did.
I did.
Marty did.
Presenting.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I did that in Debbie's absence. I went to the Golden Health Awards, and I was the presenter of the Lifetime Achievement Award to Bob Campagnon, a very nice gentleman, well-deserving by the comments that I heard. Really nice event, and I guess I did a pretty good job because everybody said I did, but that was kind of weird standing up in front of all those people in the tie. It was pretty strange for me.
As mentioned earlier, the next board meeting will be bringing forward the mid-year report for '14, '15, and of course, part of that will be what that means going forward for our budget year '15, '16. Hard to believe, '15, '16. And since only Supervisor Ponte was the one, mentioned it, I do want to remind the board we have a closed session at 12:30 tomorrow in the closed session room for the final round.
Thursday? Said tomorrow.
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 But what is tomorrow?
Yeah. Four of us talking.
It will be in the closed session room. Yeah. Your turn.
Thanks, Shirley. I don't have anything to report.
Shirley, I have one last comment. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm learning how difficult this job can be, but there is always a shining light somewhere. About five days ago, I walked into a straw hat pizza place, and I had a little blonde girl, about five years old, walk up to me. I had never met, and she gave her this color, and her name was Madison. She said, Supervisor Olivera, I hope you do a good job. So there is a bright spot to this job.
Wait until she's 20.
Yeah.
Thank you. Peter?
If I could use opportunity to pitch the next round of public meetings, tomorrow night in West Point at the VFW Hall, next Tuesday in Arnold at the fire station, and then following Thursday in Copperopolis at the La Mere. And then we close out the following week with Monday in Valley Springs at the school, and Wednesday at the Masonic Hall, thank you, in Murphy's. And then wine at my house.
Oh, we'll be in Murphy's.
Yeah. That's a fun thing. Can you put the address out there, Peter? Go ahead, Peter.
I have a request for that. Two gentlemen going up to CSAC, and hopefully, he probably won't have time now, but the Lister Prop 13 is going to be coming up in Sacramento. They failed last year. But I would like you to maybe either put in an official referendum, whatever you want to call it, how does this board feel about Prop 13, and present it to CSAC. Let them know, and that way they can see what they do about it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so.
Any other public?
Any other public comments before we end the meeting? All right, thank you very much for attending. Peter?